Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of several things to order today. The Board of Supervisors, Liquor and Entertainment Board, and the Redevelopment Authority, and the Board of Health. Lots of things on the agenda today. Today is Thursday, March 16th, 2017. It is 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street, and also on the Internet and various places. We have a roll call. Kathy for the record, please, please.
Supervisor Abab, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Kroll. Coram is present.
Thank you, Kathy. Can we call on our good friend Pastor Bruce Henderson of the Church of Christ to get us started today? Good morning, Bruce.
Let's pray. Father, I come to you this morning, first of all, just to say thank you. We thank you, Father, for an abundance of moisture this winter. And now we thank you for what looks like the appearance of spring. And we give you thanks. I've seen today's agenda, Lord. Wow. We're going to be doing a lot of listening, a lot of hearing this day. As the Liquor and Entertainment Board, we're going to be hearing things about purchasing, and contracts, and financing, and community development, and redevelopment, and going to hear from the city manager, and be the Health and Human Services, and the Health Department. Whoa. And so I would ask that as we listen, that you listen to us. I would pray for this board, and these men and women who've given their lives for this community, that you enable them this day to focus, to listen, to make the right decisions for our people. Hear us, oh Lord. We pray in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bruce. Well said. And I call on our good friend John Hurdle now to give us the pledge. John?
Could you please lead me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's take up item number five, public comment. This is the time the public is invited to comment and discuss any topic as relevant to or within the authority of the body. And we do take public comment as we go through the agenda, and we take public comment at the beginning and end of each of the various boards that we're dealing with here today. Anybody? Public comment? Mr. Macquarie, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Supervisors. My name is Chaz Macquarie, for the record. And you may recall that last month, I was here on behalf of a group of Carson City residents that really wants to work with the city and encourage them to move towards 100 percent renewable energy in the city facilities. And I'm here to follow up on that conversation. I hope to be coming back on a fairly regular basis. And through conversations with most of you, a number of points have emerged. There seems to be a general recognition that it makes sense for the city to pursue more clean energy and energy efficiency options, provided they make economic sense. The city does not want to reinvent the wheel. You want to find out what other entities and cities in Nevada and other parts of the world have done in terms of working towards sustainability, and what has worked for them and what has not worked for them. And Las Vegas and Reno have gone through that process to a greater or lesser extent, and we can certainly learn from them. There's a recognition that city staff have limited time, especially with the cleanup after the flood, and that if we're going to move forward on this, it's going to have to be a team effort. And there was maybe a need for much of the research to be done by folks outside of city staff, and we're prepared to do that. In order to move forward, the city needs a plan. And the first step in that plan would be to find out exactly what the city's current status is in terms of energy efficiency and clean energy. And for that, in other words, that would be an inventory of what the situation is right now. And to do that, to have that as a starting point, we need some information gathering, and we would need to work with the city on that, city staff, get information from other municipal entities, and then determine which areas would be the most promising to move forward on, and also a timeframe for that. So with these points in mind, it was suggested that the next step would be to meet with city staff, maybe the Director of Public Works, maybe the city manager, to start working on the inventory aspect, because obviously we're going to need the help from city staff to do that. And then that would be the first step in figuring out a plan and how we might move forward on this effort. And so with that, my request today is for the board to give us the green light, to meet with city staff, to figure out the next steps. And I know you can't take action, but maybe you could just.
No, but I think we can pretty well say, you know what? We're a board and city of the people, and you are most welcome to meet with them. I know that you've dealt in your prior life with cities and municipalities, and you know the time constraints that are under, and particularly what's going on in the flood stuff here. So I'm sure you'll be sensitive to that, but feel free to meet with those who you think are important to meet with.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chaz. All right. I have another. Anybody else on public comment before I? Anybody? All right. This week is Sunshine Week, and I've asked, how many people know what Sunshine Week is? Ah, one up here. Well, I've asked no one better than Mr. First Amendment, who's now Board of Supervisors member, John Barrett, to talk about sunshine and what Sunshine Week means, and it's important. So, and I asked him, you know, and he knew I was going to call on him. So, John, could you tell us, talk a little bit about Sunshine Week and why it's important?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When the mayor asked me to do this via email, I told him that I would try to be brief because brevity is a soul of clarity, but this is a subject I like to wax eloquent on, so might not be as brief. You know, as a budding politician, I have to say to people that sometimes I stretch the truth too bit, so maybe I stretched the truth for him when I said I'd be brief. But I have a couple of quotes that I've gone and gotten, and some of them deal with Thomas Jefferson. Every schoolboy knows that Thomas Jefferson was an advocate of the press. And at one point, he said to George Washington, or wrote to him, "No government ought to be without censors. And where the press is free, no one ever will." He also said, "No experiment can be more interesting than that we are now trying, and which we trust will end in establishing the fact that man may be governed by reason and truth. Our first object should, therefore, be to leave open to him all the avenues to truth. The most effective hitherto found is the freedom of the press. It is, therefore, the first shut up by those who fear the investigation of their actions." He said that a little later in 1804. And in 1821, he said, "The light which has been shed on mankind by the art of printing has eminently changed the condition of the world. And while printing is preserved, it can no more recede than the sun return on his course." In other words, sunshine. But I did a little more research, because that's what I've done for living all my life. I spent much of my life, I was out in state government for a while, but I spent much of my life in what's known as the media. By the way, there is no such thing as the media. Media is a plural word. The means singular. Our media is a whole bunch, a cacophony of voices. Anyway, getting into the mayor's arena as an attorney, I looked up Abrams versus United States, a 1919 case that went to the Supreme Court. Abrams was a man who, with some other budding Bolsheviks in Manhattan, passed out leaflets, which I'm sure they printed on a press, or someone printed it for them on a press. And they were brought into court, and the case went all the way to the Supreme Court because Congress had a law called the Clear and Present Danger Problem. At any rate, they condemned the hypocrisy of the United States and her allies, denouncing President Woodrow Wilson as a hypocrite and a coward. And they attacked the United States for trying to stop the Bolshevik growth of evolution and its progress in Russia. At any rate, they went to court, and in a dissenting opinion, Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes said that we should have, basically paraphrasing him, "A free marketplace of ideas." So it's not just the facts of what government does that gets out, or the facts of what is talked about in the public forum. It is actually the jousting of ideas. And Holmes was very clear on this, but he was the dissenting opinion. In other words, he lost. The Supreme Court went with the clear and present danger attitude. Later, however, Holmes' view of things prevailed, and the court, later courts backed off from that. Consequently, not only is our free press in the Constitution, it is bolstered by the highest court in the land, which we probably need to listen to. That's enough, but I will turn this statement about Sunshine Week over to Lori, who I think has something to say about some Senate legislation on a more local level, or a state level.
I was going to do it under another section, but this is fine. I just wanted to thank all of the staff in Carson City to celebrate Sunshine Week, because I think that this board and our staff are always trying to provide the public information. And I'm very proud of that, and just wanted to thank the staff. I know sometimes you feel inundated with questions from the public and things, but it's just the right thing to do. And then during legislative time, I'd like, in keeping with Sunshine Week, to talk about SB 170, which is a public records bill. So, again, just a thank you to the staff and the board for believing in the Sunshine Week.
Well said from both of you. Anybody else want to weigh in on Sunshine Week? Spread a little sunshine? All right. All right. Let's take up, any other public comment? I don't see any. Let's take up the minutes of February 16th. Did I have a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for February 16th, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous. Okay. On the agenda, a couple things. We are going to, without an objection, we're going to combine, for hearing purposes, because it fits together. Items.
Item 14B.
14B and 14C.
Right.
Charlie, 14C.
Right.
And also, we're going to combine.
22.
C and D.
Charlie and Delta.
Charlie and Delta. Okay, so 14 and 22, for hearing purposes, we'll take independent votes on those things. Also, the city manager and I have a meeting with the senator over at the legislature at 12:15, so hopefully we are out of here. You know, we can break just shortly before 12 o'clock, so we can get over and make that meeting. It's with Senator Segal Bloom, and it's one of those things we've kind of got to do. So, and if we can't, we can't, but we're going to try and make it, okay? Any other changes at the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Board, anybody? I don't see any. So we're going to take up special presentations now. Let's retire from the dais and go down on the floor and say good, meet all the good folks who take care of us these days. Test. All right. You know, we're over here in the corner talking quietly. Last night, we had a longtime public employee, just a great person, who I'm sure we all know, passed away. That's Barb Keach, and I'd like to have, Peach, and I'd like to have Melanie say a few words, please.
I just want to thank everyone for helping HR through this difficult time. As you know, we're a small office, and Barb struggled for the past month, but she wouldn't want any of you to be sad today. She would want you to know that she passed away peacefully, and they'll have a celebration of life sometime late summer, early fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. All right. All right. Bruce. Bruce, where's Bruce? Come on up. How you doing today? Bruce, so you got the, you know, it's always a pleasure seeing the colors out there, you know, with you guys, because you guys are everywhere. And I really got to say, you know, I know there's a lot of stress going on right now, but on behalf of a grateful community, we're not only going to give you a certificate for 10 years of service, but our own personal, for all of us here, appreciation for what you guys do each day. So Bruce, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept our thank you for 10 years of service, and we look forward to more.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Bruce.
Terrell. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
Terrell, you take care of the, have anyway, take care of the cemetery, right?
Correct.
Yeah. You know, sometimes the cemetery is one of those things where, let me say it like this, probably not the right way to say it, but out of sight, out of mind until you really need the cemetery. And when you do, you're faced with, you know, people grieving, people going through a lot of different emotions in life. And it's important that, you know, the city, because it's our city cemetery, understand those things, and be compassionate, and help help during those times. And on behalf of a grateful community, I'd like to say thank you for what you've done, and I know your boss says the same thing. So, Terrell, thank you. All right. Doug Spiegel. Good morning. How Carson's finest doing? All right. Yeah. Boy, 15 years. So how's it been, 15 years?
Quick.
Quick. You don't look like you've been here 15 years, man. You look like you're pretty young. But, you know, you guys are like the public works, and all of our employees are out there all the time, you know, keeping us safe, keeping things on the right track, and doing the right thing by our community. And, you know, it's a pleasure to see you here in uniform, and it's also a pleasure, on behalf of all of us here in the board, to honor 15, you for 15 years of service, and we look forward to, 15 maybe? Is that enough? 30? 50? 15 more. Thanks, Doug. Come on up. All right. Come on up here. Nick Pinochi. Good morning. Another one of finest, Carson's finest. How are you today? Good. So are you guys on duty today?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, you are. Actually, you know what? I was talking to one of your compatriots, and I said, "Are you off today?" And he said, you know, he was in civilian clothes, and he said, "Define what off means." Because I know, you know, and what that really says is, you know, you guys, you know, maybe you take your uniform off at night when you go home or during your days off, but you're always on duty. And so, Nick, I want to give you a certificate for 15 years of service to our great community, and we do look forward to 15 more years. Thank you very much. Thank you. Come on up here. All right. Albert. Albert Akins. Did you retire?
Yes.
And we're giving you a certificate, too. Did you retire? Huh?
Yeah, it's pretty nice.
25 years.
I didn't know I was going to get this, so Ryan called me, my boss.
So, yeah, so are you, are you, what, are you actually retired now? Are you going, are you planning on it? Where are you?
I'm looking for some part-time work, and I do ministry with the prison systems, and I'm just keep working in juvenile hall, too, doing the church services.
Very good. Well, Albert, I know you're retired, and we want to thank you for your 25 years of service to our community, and keeping it a great place to live, work, and play, and do well in retirement, and come on up here, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Here you go. All right. Come on. There you are. All right. All right. We'll get, Albert, come on up here. We're going to get a picture. Anybody? Family?
Co-workers?
Co-workers. You guys here. Yes, sir. All right. All right. The sheriff. The sheriff. Want to get in here, sheriff? Come on, sheriff.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. I'm going to get a pint of coffee.
Yeah.
There we go. Oh, look at that. All right.
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Bagwell has a disclosure to make.
NRS 281A dot 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain for participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My son works for Ida Bailey, the auditing company whose contract we are approving. Therefore, a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by this relationship. And as such, I will be abstaining for participating in this specific item, which is 9B on the consent.
All right. Let's take up the consent agenda then. Anybody, any other disclosures? We'll take a motion with, to approve the consent agenda, knowing that on item 9B, there'll be an abstention by Supervisor Bagwell. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 9A and 9B, with a note that Supervisor Bagwell is abstaining from item 9B on the vote.
Motion second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you, Lori, for the disclosure. Will now recess the Board of Supervisors and take up the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Let the record reflect that all the members of the Liquor and Entertainment Board are here, including the sheriff, who has joined us. We're on item 12, public comment, under the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Anybody on, want to talk about anything in the purview of the Liquor and Entertainment Board? Let the record reflect, there are no, nobody that wants to speak at public comment. Let's take up the minutes of February 2nd, 1st of 2017, for the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Everybody got that one? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board for February 2nd, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion, the second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous. Let's take up item 16.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board for February 16th, 2017, as presented.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous. Mayor Protem, would you take a, it looks like I've got this emergency going on right now.
Moving to item number 14, to approve the liquor catering license transfer. Lena, are you going to take us through this?
This item is for possible action to approve the liquor catering license transfer from 2811 South Carson Street to 701 South Carson Street for Scotty's Family Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as a catered affair. Liquor license number 17-31743. He is relocating the catering license to a different location. He has met the requirements, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Good morning, John. Do you want to just tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing?
Well, I, right now, there's potential sale of my building property, and I have a, sorry. Currently, there's a potential sale of my building, and so I'm moving the catering operation to another business that I already operate, so trying to be proactive in this case, in case it culminates, so.
Good for you. Any board questions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Lori?
I move to approve the liquor catering license transfer from 2811 South Carson Street to 701 South Carson Street for Scotty's Family Restaurant, Inc., doing business as a catered affair. Liquor license number 17-31743.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize to the board and to the public. There, a little emergency for somebody who's having some difficulties, so, okay. All right. Let's take up 14B. Ms. Dor Pansky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Susan Pansky, Special Projects Planner.
And as we said, we're going to take up items, we're going to hear 14B and C together, so if everybody wants to, we're going to speak on this, we'll do both, but we'll vote on them independently, okay? Go.
Yes. So I think everyone is pretty familiar with this, where we are with this now. I've been here a couple times, but at our last meeting, it was determined that we would bring the suggested changes to the liquor board for ultimate recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval. So that's what we're doing, and there are two separate items. The first, 14B, is the liquor ordinance changes themselves. And then the second is the resolution. One of the changes we're recommending is to move fees from the ordinance itself into a resolution, so there's a recommendation in 14C for that resolution. So just a quick summary of the changes that we have gone through in our various meetings. We're proposing to delegate the authority to approve licenses to the hearings officer with exceptions for forwarding to the board. We're clarifying penalties for operating without a license, paying renewals late, and failure to replace the liquor manager, exempting wholesalers from background checks and appearance requirements. As I mentioned, moving all fees to resolution, increasing the time period on penalties from six months to 12, allowing businesses to sell liquor in the public right-of-way with an encroachment permit, clarifying that the mayor will serve as the board chair, making the application fee fully refundable if a license is denied, and 50 percent refundable if the application doesn't go in, applicant doesn't go into business, adding conditions of approval that could include the payment of delinquent city fees, fines, and taxes. Grounds for disciplinary action that would include selling and dispensing of liquor not purchased from a state licensed wholesale dealer, consistent with NRS. Grounds for denial could, will include falsification of information on an application within the last five years. And finally, and this one is new, that staff is suggesting removing the possession and consumption of liquor in public section from this ordinance in favor of moving it to a different part of our code. And the reason for that is because this particular section deals with the possession and consumption of liquor, which really is a consumer issue, as opposed to a liquor provider. And the liquor ordinance itself really deals with the people that are dispensing and selling liquor, not the people consuming it. So we're proposing that that section is not appropriate, and we're asking that it be removed as a part of this change. So with that, I think we're happy to answer questions and clarify any of the changes we're proposing.
Questions? That's a, Lori, go then.
So if we can just speak to the last removal section, if we remove it from here, where will it be covered? Because if we pass this now, then this section's removed. So where will it be handled?
Yes, so we are proposing that it is deleted from Section 4, and we would propose that. propose that it be added into Title 8, which is the Public Peace, Safety, and Morals Chapter under the section Prohibited Conduct. So that would be added with a modification to that ordinance.
That we don't have yet.
That's correct, and, and that's...
So I'm just looking at timing?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there any issue that the sheriff's, timing-wise, is, is just solely my point?
Excuse me. No, there's no issue with timing, as I spoke with you, um, at one of the previous meetings, uh, there were only three citations issued all year last year, so there's not gonna be an issue with that.
Ken, my only question to you would be, are you comfortable with where we've come with this and, and what's being proposed today?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I'm, yeah, I, I'm a little bit uneasy about, uh, item number six, um, and that start, that encroachment, um, you know, how, how is a, an officer supposed to know, uh, exactly where we're standing, which part of the, the piece of the ground is the right-of-way and such? While it might seem very easy for, for everybody else, it, it can be a challenge, especially when, when we're looking at business-to-business, and, and that's usually where we get into an issue. I, um, I dare say that, um, item number 12, removing that, the, uh, open consumption, it's just, it's just not an issue in Carson City. It just has not been. If there's truly a reason for a person to be cited, um, uh, just because he's holding something in his hand, I, I don't, it's not something that we do at the sheriff's office very often. It does happen, but not very often, and, and when we look at the, the developments of downtown, uh, we really are trying to eagerly bring everybody out into the community and not hide them away.
Thank you, Ken. I guess, Lee, then I'll ask you, is there some way that, um, I understand, understand Ken's concern with regards to business-to-business and in terms of encroachment, is there a, a way of identifying, uh, dividing line, I guess?
For the record, Lee Plamel, Community Development Director, so I think you're, you're still, to come before you are those encroachment permit standards, so I think, you know, that Public Works and Community Development needs to work with the sheriff to make sure the verbiage is clear in there. Remember, when you're considering those, you are gonna be considering some delineation. Uh, there's, we're talking about seating areas, so the way that makes it sound kinda general, like people, like you're selling it on the street and they're walking away, and that's not what the case and the intent of the encroachment permit is for, so to get some clarity in there, that it's for, at, in the, at the tables and staying within that area, should be able to be accomplished through that.
And some of the fencing may be in place for various establishments as well, so, okay.
John.
Just out of curiosity, sheriff and fellow liquor and entertainment board member, what were those three citations issued under, if there was, under state law, or how did you, how did you do that when we didn't have, or did we have something?
You know, um, I looked at the three citations that were issued last year, um, and, and one might turn their cheek and say, if, if it doesn't rise to the level of disorderly conduct under the liquor guidances, um, why, why were we doing it to begin with? And I guess that would be my answer to you.
Thank you.
Other board comments or questions? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody, members of the public, wanna weigh in on this one? Okay. Go.
So, I, I know that the, we have a moratorium on the marijuana establishments and stuff, but is it not that they want the licensed liquor? Is what the current law is? So I just wanna make sure we're not doing anything here that's gonna impact that and just on the record that the...
For distribution?
Mm-hmm. There's nothing we're doing here, or I guess we could just come back when we bring the marijuana back. I just wanna make sure we're not two steps ahead of ourself, and then we're gonna take it all back.
Okay, yeah, and speaking of marijuana, that's one of the things we wanna talk to Segaboom about, that allows us an absolute opt-out on the special events for marijuana, so we wanna, Nick's already testified about that, and I thought, you know, let's go reinforce that statement, so, all right, all right. Supervisor Barrett?
Yeah, just thank you, Lori, for that question, because, um, two steps forward, three steps back doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I, I was pretty sure that was the case, but getting it on the record's good.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, motions in order.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of an ordinance amending Title 4, Licenses and Business Regulations, Chapter 13, Liquor Board and Liquor Licensing and Sales, as published on the agenda.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Sheriff voted aye, he was over there talking, but he voted aye, right? Let the record reflect, he voted aye. All right, kidding you, sheriff. All right, all right, uh... Fourteenth, Charlie, let's take up that one. Do you wanna do that one, Supervisor Bagwell?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors adoption of a resolution moving specific fee amounts for liquor license fees from the Carson City Municipal Code Title 4, Licenses and Business Regulations, Chapter 13, Liquor Board and Liquor Licensing and Sales, to a separate fee schedule, which will be maintained by the Business License Division, and which may be amended with the approval of the Board of Supervisors.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. John.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, thank you for this process, by, by this method, we've gone through basically three cycles where the public can take a look at it, as I mentioned, back at the time we first heard it, so, um, when it gets to the board formally, why, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you for the heads up, okay. On a motion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous, thank you. Okay, carried.
Thank you, and then we will bring this back for first and second reading on April 6th and April 20th.
Okay, all right. We're now on item number 15, public comment under Liquor and Entertainment. Anybody? I don't see anybody. Are we ready to adjourn? So unless there's an objection, we will adjourn as a Liquor and Entertainment Board, and we will reconvene as a Board of Supervisors. There's no items from the consent agenda, so we'll now move to item 19. 19A, this is an interlocal contract with the state of Nevada, binding through its Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Adriana, will you listen to this? I see on the signature block on this, there's two Crowls, one is the mayor, and the other was the director of Conservation and Natural Resources, Bradley Crowl. So, I mean, for the record, that Bradley Crowl on that is my son. I don't support him anyway, but, um...
But he's your son?
Not anymore.
He's like yours. That in my...
He's like yours, but I, but I think, uh, this is one of those ones where, you know, this is administrative matter through the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, so with that disclosure, I intend to vote. All right, thanks, all right, folks, all right. It's a little odd, though, when I look at that, I thought, holy smokes, you know, okay, all right, all right, let's take it up. Who's doing it? Chief, go.
For the record, John Arneson with, uh, Fire. We're bringing this, uh, contract to you, it's with the state of Nevada, we've had it for four years now. It's just an ongoing contract, it's our insurance policy. Basically, that allows us to use Division of Forestry resources, um, over the two years to help us mitigate wildland fires and any life safety issues. We used, most recently, a lot of, um, the convict crews, uh, for the flood. So, um, we've done this, this will be the fifth year that we're going into this contract. It's worked out very well for the city. If you have any other questions, I can answer them.
Anybody? Anybody? Public comment? It's been a good, it's been a good relationship, and it's...
Very good.
Yeah. Thank you, John. All right, motions in order, Supervisor, Supervisor, excuse me.
I move to enter into an inter, interlocal contract between the state of Nevada acting by and through its Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, Nevada Division of Forestry, and the Consolidated Municipality of Carson City, for the purpose of administering a wildland fire protection program for wildland fires and other emergencies, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimous, thank you. Say hello to everybody over there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Let's take up 19 Bravo, uh, to apply for, this is to authorize emergency management on behalf of Carson City to submit a letter of intent to apply for assistance from the Nevada State Disaster Relief Account. John, Mr. Arneson, Chief Arneson, you wanna try this again?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the chief has it, but for the board members, if, if you recall the email that I put out yesterday, and just for the public, I think I could walk them through it briefly, so that everyone understands what the 404,000 bottom-line number on the spreadsheet that we have in the board packages. In January, and this is only for the January flood event, it doesn't include the February flood event. That is still, we're still working that number up. We submitted just under $3.4 million request, uh, to FEMA for federal assistance. FEMA will reimburse up to 75% of that number, okay? So that leaves 25% or about a little over $800,000 that FEMA would not reimburse. The, um, the State Disaster Relief Fund will reimburse up to 50% of that remaining number. That's what the $404,000 amount is. We reckon that that's gonna be higher than what we're actually gonna submit for, for our final number, and the reason why is, before FEMA's gonna reimburse us, we have to back out any insurance coverage that we have, and any deductibles that we pay as part of that insurance. FEMA has set up a, um, a, a regional office, uh, just down, uh, where the heck are they? Down by Cost Plus? In that?
That shopping center.
In that shopping center, I think. So FEMA has a regional office, 30 to 60 days from when we submitted our request, our $3.4 million request, we will have a, a jumpstart, so to speak, meeting with them. We'll get better visibility on, we submitted our request on the 6th of March, so we'll get better visibility on what we think FEMA's gonna reimburse us for. We're very confident in, in our submission, we think we have a very tight package, um, but that's what the $404,000 is.
So there may be additional funds coming from that account, is that right? Or is that the total amount?
Do you mean for the February flood event?
Yeah, for the February flood event.
Potentially. The chief may know, I don't off the top of my head, how multiple events and the same piece of infrastructure, and I think I use the example of, okay, you have a trail, in January, we had flood damage to the trail. In February, we had a subsequent flood event, and that whole trail washed out. So how does that work? How does it work for insurance deductible? How does it work for FEMA reimbursement? Maybe the chief knows, I know I don't.
So basically, uh, the January flood, if there was anything that, good that came out of the difference between the January and the February, is the January was more east, the February was more west. Now, there was some spillover on the east side, but a lot of photographs, which really is the only way we could take, you know, any kind of, um, evidence from the damage from the January quake, or excuse, quake, not quake, um, flood, um, so, let's, we don't need a quake. So the flood, so we do have some evidence of the differentiations between January and February. So that's about all we can go on, um, but there is, you know, like I say, it's more of a west-east, January, February kinda thing.
Chief, if, um, if there was damage in the January flood, and Public Works went out and did work on it, and then it washed out again in the February flood, are we going to be able to then submit in both events, the January event and the February event, because they were two separate incidents, and it had been repaired?
We should be able to, yes. If we can show some kind of evidence documentation that that occurred, which I'm sure we have.
And then, Nick, my final question is, um, are we contemplating doing a preemptive state of emergency for the runoff, the anticipated runoff?
Yeah, the, the chief and I have spoken about that. As you know, Lyon County did it. I don't know what benefit we accrue from doing that, but we are, we are examining the possibility of bringing you more of an open-ended, well, it wouldn't be open-ended, but more of a preemptive disaster declaration in anticipation of spring flooding. The good news for us is, the greatest danger that we have are mainly, not completely, but mainly are, are the creeks on the west side. The big, the big danger coming up here in the spring is gonna be all the runoff coming down the river. As you know, the river has a lot of room in terms of Carson City to rise before we're looking at substantial damage. We do have all the usual places that we're particularly worried about. Morgan Mill Road, Sierra Vista Lane, if you look at our River View Park, we took a lot of damage there. We still have a major sinkhole down by, Supervisor Aboud was asking me about this, down by the Mexican Dam. So there's a lot of damage that we still have that we, we're looking at the potential of preemptively declaring a disaster. If I could just add one more point, because a lot of community members are asking about the damage, when are we gonna repair it? If it's an immediate safety hazard, we have to take care of it, we're gonna take care of it. The sinkhole, for, for example, Supervisor, we went in and dug it out, and we've done a better job of cordoning it off, but we don't, we don't wanna have to repair things twice. And we do think we're gonna have additional flooding, especially along the river there. So we don't wanna have to repair things twice. If you look up in the Timberline area, Public Works is, I don't, I think as of earlier this week, that road was still impassable. I think they are gonna fix that road, but there's a lot of damage that we're really just gonna wait until the end of the flood, or not the end of the flood, but the end of the wet season, so that we're not expending resources twice on the same piece of damage.
So my major concern is, how do we, how do we address an event that could be ongoing for 14 or 16 weeks? And so that's, you know, my, my question would be, if we declare a preemptive state of emergency, can we do it for the spring runoff event, which covers April 1st through July 31st? So that we don't run into the problem that we're having now with, well, this event happened on January 4th, and this event happened on January 10th, and this event happened on February 2nd, and you have to submit a new package for every one of those?
It's my understanding, and I was just talking to, um, Mike, um, that this is going to be an issue, and we should probably try to front-load it, as the city manager is saying. Is there a way to differentiate? That's really difficult, because we've never had this happen before, at least in my 26 years, um, with the city. So, you know, we're, we're trying to get ahead of something that we don't really know what it's going to be yet, because it's so much weather-dependent. If we have a, the weather that we need, and the runoff is slow, then we might not have any issues. If we have the opposite, then we're gonna have another mess on our hands. So all we can do is try to front-load our declaration and get as much, you know, photography and evidence as we can between each event.
Nick, this probably pertains to you, and I just saw Darren walk in, in the room. With the creeks and rivers, and that being the concern, um, as we go through spring runoff, and I'll use Timberline as an example, these underground springs that have presented themselves, and Timberline Road, that water undermining that, are they taking precautionary measures in the repair to, um, divert that water, to deal with it, because that water is still running, and I'm just... In terms of trying to get things paid for and covered, I'm just worried about secondary problems.
Yes, good morning, Darren Schultz, Public Works for the record. So it's, it's both, it's, it's yes to both of those. Some of the projects we are looking at, we are just, we are just able to put back what was there before, and we're not solving the problem long-term. Other problems, other projects, we're going, and we're specifically asking for reimbursement to fix the problem right, the, this time around. So it's a mixed bag, they won't, they won't let us fix, they won't pay for all of them to be fixed correctly, some of them, we just have to put back what was there, and then we fix it on our own dime later.
Yeah, returning to Brad's question, I, I, I'm still a little fuzzy on whether we can, you talked about front-end loading, which is a fine phrase, but I don't understand whether we can make a declaration that anticipates a whole 16-week period. Can we or can we not, or are the rules clear on that from the FEMA?
I would have to check with my, uh, deputy emergency manager to make sure on that, so I'm not going to put something out there that...
So I'm not going to put something out there that's not going to follow FEMA's rules. So I will follow that.
Could you check on that for both Brad and me and the board?
So my question's more in the insurance arena. So do we have insurance coverage for natural disasters? Because I know a lot don't cover that. So do you anticipate that our insurance carrier will cover the flood event?
So I know, to answer your question, I know risk management is working with our carrier right now. I don't know what, if anything, they're going to cover. I haven't heard back. I'm going to look, and I'm getting a negative head nod from the CFO. So I don't know if we know yet, but we're going to look into that. If we do, we are going to pay, obviously, our deductible. Should be $100,000. I don't know if it's going to be $100,000 per event. I don't know if it's $100,000 per item. So as soon as I find out, I'm going to put that information out to you. I just don't know yet.
So I think, though, that before we submit any claims, assume that there is coverage for some of this, I think we should do a cost-benefit analysis. If we can get 75% reimbursement from FEMA, we might be better off taking that 75% and not submitting claims to the insurance, seeing our rates go up, or maybe coverage dropped at some point, or multiple deductibles. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that...
Follow-up in that answer, I'm not so, somebody needs to answer that one, about whether or not you can do that under FEMA rules. I mean, whether or not we can swap between the two, but it's a good question.
I'll find out that answer. I can talk to DEM today and touch bases with them on both of those things. The other thing, too, is, and I'm not sure if this was covered or not, but the reason that we're, I guess, use the word "front-load" again, is because there's so many counties and municipalities that are in this, that one of the reasons that this is coming early per se is to get it to the legislature, because they might have to move the Nevada reimbursement account for disasters up. They might have to increase that funding. So that's kind of why we're doing this earlier than later.
Smart move. All right. Ms. Schule, you want to say anything?
Thank you.
You've spoken like a good attorney, man. You know? If you've got nothing, don't say anything. Okay? All right. Anybody, any other comments or questions? Public comment, anybody? Chief, tell all your folks again for all of us, thanks for taking care of us and make sure. I forgot to tell the NDF folks that were here, thanks for their help on all these issues. It's a big deal. And, you know, I sit on the VNT Railroad, they're also applying for some of this, they may need some help kind of working through all the FEMA stuff like that, so kind of keep that in mind of, Susan Dor Pansky's father, Ken Dor, is doing that for us, so.
Okay. All right. It's been my pleasure to be part of this disaster.
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's an interesting way of putting it, you know? So you want more disasters then? All right.
It's negative, sir, thank you.
You got it, you got it, we got you. Thanks, thanks, all right. All right, anybody else? I don't see any motions in order, Supervisor Aboud, go.
I made a motion to authorize emergency management on behalf of Carson City to submit a letter of intent to apply for assistance from the Nevada State Disaster Relief Account for expenses not reimbursed by private insurance or federal aid.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimously. Thanks very much. Thanks, John, thanks, Iris, okay. All right. All right, let's take up, where are we now? We're on item number 20. This is possible purchase of Nexplanon, is that how it's pronounced? For Carson City Health and Human Services through the 340B Prime Vendor Drug Discount Program. Ms. Aker, you've got Laura with us. Laura, why don't you give us the top line, then we'll have Nikki tell us about what we're doing here and why.
Good morning, Laura Raider, purchasing and contracts. This is to approve the purchase of Nexplanon Long-Acting Birth Control Implant through the Federal 340B Prime Vendor Drug Discount Program for a not-to-exceed amount of $61,500, which was originally not budgeted. Health and Human Services recently received additional Title X funding to cover this.
So as Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, as Laura stated, we received some additional funds from the Title X program. And when receiving those funds, we looked at what would be the best use of those funds and decided that it was to go ahead and purchase additional long-acting implants called Nexplanon. And we hadn't brought it to you prior to this, because normally with this company, we do not spend over $50,000, but because of this additional purchase, it puts us over that $50,000 threshold.
How long have we been doing this?
Doing the implants.
And who does the implants? How long have we been doing that?
We've been doing the implants for quite some time, and it's our advanced practice registered nurse in the clinic that implants them.
Nikki, along those lines, so do you monitor if there's any health effects on that, and is there a shelf life, since we're purchasing more than we have in the past?
There is an expiration date on them, and that expiration date, you know, we don't have to, we haven't had to dispose of any that have expired, to my knowledge. And yes, we've got the advanced practice RN that is implanting, like I said, and additional RN, and we're monitoring all, you know, effects, health effects during the procedure and afterwards.
Nikki, what is the amount of the additional funding that you received?
I'll have Ronnie Gallos come up, and she's got those figures for you.
Hi, this is Ronnie Gallos with Carson City Health and Human Services. The total amount, basically, the federal government restructured the grant funding periods, so, and that resulted in an overlapping grant budget. So we had an additional $82,000 in funds, and we had to resubmit, or we had to submit a plan for how to spend that additional money. And some of that was on staffing, and then some of it was on staff education and training, and then the additional amount was for different birth control methods. And so this is, this is just one portion of that total reallocation.
So was the increase $82,000, or was it increased to $82,000 total?
There actually was no increase. It was the result of an overlapping budget that resulted in us having a one-time $82,000.
And you don't think that there will be any impacts by the grant periods overlapping, then this new grant period is still going to be, what, one year, two years, three years?
The current grant that this additional money is in ends on March 31st. And at first, we didn't, at first, we didn't have permission to spend this money, and it wasn't until about December, January, that we were informed that because it was issued, it was ours to utilize. And so, did that answer your question?
Sort of. I'm getting there. Give me a minute. The fog is sort of clearing. So, but you said that there are overlapping grant periods, so does that mean you've already submitted for new funding? And not only do we have the 82 that's been allocated to the previous grant, but we will also be getting funding from the new grant? And both of, so we're going to have another set of money that will be coming?
Right. So our current Title X Family Planning Grant goes through March 31st, 2019. And every year, and it goes from April 1st to March 31st. And then every year, even though we've been awarded a three-year grant, every year, we have to resubmit a non-competitive grant with a budget, and we've already done that in December. And we have currently been awarded six months of the next year's grant. The federal fiscal budget has not been approved, basically because our grant started April 1st. They were able to allocate us six months of the grant in this federal fiscal budget. But the current fiscal year 18 federal budget has not been approved yet. So currently, we have funding through September 30th.
Okay. The picture's becoming clearer. A final question, how did you determine that this was the best use of the additional money? I assume that there were other choices.
There were, and we basically evaluated what the need was, and that's basically, staffing is always a prioritization, so we looked at that in the initial, and then the long-acting birth control methods are our most expensive methods. Like, we can get birth control pills for $2 to $4 to $8, but these longer-acting birth controls are $300. And so, in the budget, this is not the only long-acting birth control we put in the reallocation. We actually put all of our long-acting, but this was the only one that put us over the threshold.
Yeah, first of all, what were those other alternatives? Or was it just the one you were talking about, the pills?
The other alternatives are, that we could have used this money on is birth control pills, birth control shots, there's a contraceptive ring, and then there are things called IUDs, which are intrauterine devices. And so, in our budget reallocation plan, we requested for both of the intrauterine devices in addition to this implant, because they're our most expensive product.
Secondarily, going back to the mayor's question, do you know how long we've been doing this?
Oh, as far, well, this birth control, we've been, well, we've been doing this since, I'm trying to think of how long the implant's been out, at least five or six years. It could be even longer. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact information. And then, just to answer Supervisor Aboud's question as well, we did, this is, the purchase that we're going to make, this was your, a previous question, the purchase we're going to make is about a year's supply, and the expiration date is usually two or three years.
Any other board comments for it? Public comment? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on this one? I don't see any, anything else. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the purchase of Nexplanon Long-Acting Birth Control Implant for Carson City Health and Human Services through the 340B Prime Vendor Drug Discount Program, a U.S. federal government program from Curiscript, an approved distributor under this program for a total amount not to exceed $61,500, to be funded from the Health and Human Services Clinic Title X Account for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
There's a motion, and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. And this afternoon at the Board of Health, you're going to hear more about our Title X funding. As we know, that's kind of a area nationally that is in jeopardy, so you'll hear more.
All right. All right. Let's take up, thank you very much, thanks, Ronnie. Thanks, Laura. All right, you're still there. All right, let's take up 20 Bravo. Laura, while they're coming up, who's going to take care of this? Zach?
Yeah, Zach's coming.
While he's coming up, go ahead and give us the top line again.
All right, this is to approve the purchase of one water utility truck, one sewer van, one wastewater treatment plant utility truck, and one street rubber melter for, from Michael Hole and Capital Ford, through the Straits Competitive Bid List and HGAC thereby program for a total not to exceed of $288,150.16. These will be funded from the water fund equipment, sewer maintenance equipment, and streets maintenance equipment accounts, which have all been budgeted and will replace current equipment.
Okay. Mr. Good, good morning. Tell us what these pieces of equipment intend to do with them.
All right, good morning, board of supervisors.
The street one.
Yeah, so we'll start out with the streets particular machine. It's the rubber machine. It's basically, it melts rubber and fills all the cracks in the roads and helps seal out any type of water intrusion that would degrade and cause the road to alligator out or collapse. So it's part of our road preventative maintenance program. We run with it. Our current unit's pretty much getting houred out and limited on parts support. We used to be able to get parts out of Arizona, and now we have to get parts out of Ohio. So it just, it incurs more downtime or me stocking more parts, as well as, we have about 6,000 hours on the machine, and it's due for replacement.
The other?
Ah, the other. So then, the wastewater treatment plant truck is a utility truck. As we can see, we have a lot of construction going on over at the wastewater treatment plant. We have also four mechanics that run out of there, and currently, they're running all out of basically two trucks, so adding another utility truck to be able to split up the mechanics and store their tools and be able to divide and conquer and do their job. That's helping us in that area. Our water utility truck is just another thing for water utilities to utilize for our crews. And we just have an houred-out truck. The body itself and the suspension is pretty well-worn, and as this truck has had a increased slope in parts and maintenance costs over the last couple of years, it's just getting inefficient to keep repairing over and over again.
I have some questions. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Zach, the replacement vehicles, are they going to salvage or auction?
They're going to go to auction.
Okay. And I see that these were budgeted purposes?
Yes.
Purchases, excuse me? Okay, thank you.
So my question's just in general, is, we have a budget that starts on July 1, and we approved capital purchases of vehicles, and I'm just interested, why does it take all the way till March, if you really needed the vehicles, to make the purchase?
This year, with finances rollover from last year's finance to this year's finance, wanted to make sure I didn't spend any money that was not going to be there, one. And the other reason is, is ordering cycles. So sometimes my ordering cycles don't open up till sometimes later in the year. So try to order them as quickly as possible, but as order cycles do fall, that's how it falls with my chassis that I would order, let's say, from GM or Ford or certain manufacturers.
Can I clarify what you mean by that? That they don't open up? They won't sell their chassis, except for three times a year? I don't understand.
Okay, so an order cycle may not open up till later in the year, i.e. either November or December or January, and then an order cycle may close in April or May. So it, depending on the manufacturer, Ford or Chevy, depending how they open up their ordering for chassis for fleet, I'm kind of pigeon-holed that it's not an all-year synopsis where I could just go to the dealership and say, all right, I want a 2017 Ford F250, and I'll need it right now. They're like, all orders are shut off, or closed off, or all orders are full. So they've shut off the orders early, which we've seen even in previous years. So those are the things that dictate my ordering, dictate my ordering cycles.
All right. Any other board comments? Board comments? Public, anyone want to weigh in on this one? I don't see anybody. Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the purchase of one water utility truck, one sewer van, one wastewater treatment plant utility truck, and one street rubber melter from Michael Hole Motor Company and Capital Ford through the State of Nevada Competitive Bid List and HGAC Buy Program. Cooperative purchasing agreement for a not-to-exceed amount of $288,150.16 to be funded from the water fund equipment, sewer maintenance equipment, and streets maintenance equipment accounts.
There's a motion, second by Supervisor Aboud, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Good. Thank you, Laura. All right. Let's now take up finance. Let's find out what went on this cost allocation plan. We pay these guys a little bit of money, and then we have an error such as this. It's good we caught it, but tell us what's going on. Sherry, you going to do this?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Sherry, Deputy CFO. I actually requested to do this, so don't blame Nancy. So...
Blame her for something.
So each year, Michelle, the consultant, and I are typically very careful to make sure that all the direct costs are not included in this big cost allocation plan. This year, however, the direct project costs were included inadvertently. It was an oversight by the consultant. I missed it during the review. Public Works actually caught it when they reviewed their budgets. It looked pretty high, and they asked for the whole cost allocation plan, and they caught it. So kudos to them. And, you know, Michelle has been our consultant for over 10 years. This is the first error she's made in our attempts to be more accurate with the true-up. That is actually part of what caused the error. So if you need me to explain that, I will.
Okay.
Yes. So, okay, so because in the past, we took Public Works out of Michelle's and added the fiscal year 18 estimates from Public Works, we never considered doing a true-up. So we didn't look... so we didn't look real closely at Michelle's numbers, because we didn't need to, we took them out, so I didn't look real closely at them. Now, in the past, Michelle has removed that project cost, and unfortunately, she didn't this year, I didn't catch it, and then when we came around to the very end doing the true-up, it was included. So luckily, we caught it before the budget's done, so we can get it corrected.
Questions of the board? Anybody? John, go.
Yeah, you say that they've been doing this for, for 10 years, and this is the first time this has happened?
At least 10 years. I've only been here six, and I know they were doing it several years before I started.
Is there a representative from the, Mallory here?
Michelle is here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just, I'm curious, is this actually a mistake that came by miscommunication, is that what you're telling us?
I think I'm gonna have Michelle answer that.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michelle. Michelle with Mahoney and Associates. Yes, it was a mistake, a miscommunication with that respect. When we prepare a cost allocation plan, many times a city or county will make adjustments afterwards, so we prepare it using actual financial data that, for the, but, true, I'm sorry, per the CAFER, when we prepare the cost allocation plan, and then afterwards, many times, the finance department will make adjustments to those numbers. In this case, there was a journal entry made, which I didn't pick up, it was a new procedure that we were doing, and I realize what the, what they have done now with their journal entry, and it won't happen again next year, we'll catch it for sure.
Okay, and everyone makes mistakes, I just think, I refer to your company as Mallory as Mahoney, I'm sorry, but does this kind of thing, has this happened to you in other sets of circumstances? I assume you do this for others.
The mistake or the adjustments?
Miscommunication, let's call it.
The miscommunication piece. Sometimes, it, as, as the finance directors and things, as they work through their process side of things, things, things change from year to year, sometimes, you know, they bring that to my attention early on in the process, and other times, it's caught during a review process. In this case, it was a new procedure that was implemented by Carson City, and it got missed by both of us.
Fine, go ahead.
Go ahead. So I just wanna clarify it a little bit, the top portion of the cost allocation plan that you're seeing is based on fiscal year 16 actuals, so when we picked up the amount for Public Works, what, that's the engineering piece of Public Works, and so we budget everyone's salary at 100% in that department, and then by journal entry, we back out costs that are directly allocated to various projects. So it was that negative, the piece that would have reduced the engineering, you know, actuals that got missed, so the actuals for Public Works ended up being about 500,000 more than they should have been. And then when we were comparing that to do the true-up, we're comparing fiscal 16 actuals to what was estimated by Public Works for fiscal 16, so when we were using the wrong actual amounts, it caused the calculation to be in error, hopefully, does that clarify a little bit?
So, I just wanna comment that I really appreciate that, as you recall, we implemented a new process to ensure that the funds were either charged or returned money from the estimate, and so I recognize we introduced a new process into this, and it actually works, because when you go then to push the numbers into the budget process, you noticed, and so did Public Works, that whoa, this is way, way wrong, so I really appreciate that it was a new process that really put the glitch in it, and you've already put in parameters to catch it for the future, so I think it's just a one-off error because of the new process, and I really appreciate everyone's hard work to, to get this right, so thanks.
It was also distributed across a number of funds, which, when, in our review process, probably on both sides, the, some of the amounts were pretty small and could be attributed to other factors, and so it also didn't trigger a response to go and look deeper into it, so it, had it been a really large number, and in a singular fund, it would have been caught very easily.
So I'm just curious what the consequences would have been if this error had not been caught?
The general fund would have ended up with an extra half million dollars.
Right, so there wouldn't have been any...
Pick it up next year, and refund.
No, what I'm looking for is, would there have been any financial consequences, fines, fees, anything of that, for filing inaccurate numbers?
No, we just would have taken extra from sewer and water and all the other special revenue and enterprise funds.
All right, thank you.
And then it could have been trued up and actually corrected the following year, when you catch the error.
Would it not have run our audit crazy? Okay.
If it's a process issue, did it only, why did it only happen to Public Works? I mean, if we take actual and then back out by journal entry, why did it only happen to Public Works? I mean, what happened?
Because Public Works is the only one that we were removing and adding their estimates, and it's the first time we did a true-up on that, that estimate.
Other questions or comments from the board? Public comment? Anybody wanna weigh in on cost allocation? All right, motions in order, Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to accept the corrected Carson City Cost Allocation Plan for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2016, for use in preparing the fiscal year 2018 Carson City budget.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimous, thanks folks for everything, all right. All right, let's take up item 22. This is the Ormsby House, who wants to come up?
Good morning, Lee Plamow, Community Development Director. I'll, I'll just introduce the item real, real quickly here, this item is action to get a report from the, regarding the Ormsby House building permit, just a little bit of quick background, the permit was set to expire but required approval of an extension by the Board of Supervisors, which the Supervisors granted on September 15 of 2016, a couple of the conditions were that they complete all the civil improvements under, under their permit within 90 days, and then they were to come back to you in March to give this report, we were, we didn't coordinate schedules at the first meeting in March, as we tried to on the agenda, so we're bringing the report to you now. Just a quick report on the, on the 90 days of what they were required to do in the last fall/winter, they got through really as much as they could, they ran into problems with NV Energy vault, so there was an area that we had, they were stuck waiting for NV Energy to pull something out and repave there, then the weather came in, so there's a little bit remaining on those pavements, which they should be able to complete now, but they, they substantially completed those civil improvements in conformance with this, at least what, what they could do based on weather and other constraints outside of their ability to control, and we have Kimberly Fegan here and others up here to give you their report.
Good morning, Kimberly.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Supervisors. For the record, Kimberly Fegan, I'm here today to give an update on the Ormsby House. I brought with me our contractor, Tom Medcalf, and he'll give you an update on construction, and this gentleman sitting next to me, Ted Stover, is with Collier International, we've engaged him in a one-year contract to both market and sell the Ormsby House. That being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom to give you an update on construction.
For the record, Tom Medcalf, Medcalf Builders, what Lee said. To expand on it a little bit, the driveway apron onto Curry Street was our exiting for our paving equipment, we did run into issues with NV Energy, we were able to work with NV Energy, come up with a solution, just recently, we were able to pour the spandrel and the apron from Curry Street onto the parking lot, the concrete portion, if you look at that picture there, exiting out onto the, what I call the 8th Street parking lot behind the AMPM, that's where we exited our paving equipment also, if you noticed, our paver sat there for two months, and we left that open because basically, we got stuck by the weather. What we're waiting on now is literally the sub-base for the moisture content to go down, once that moisture content goes down, we can then proof-roll it, get up to our 95% compaction, put on our six inches of base, pave our last three inches, and we're done.
You think we're gonna have a reduction in our moisture content?
Daily. Our moisture content is getting lower and lower every day, with, of course, next week, we've got weather coming in, we're trying to schedule our paver now, but again, we're also cognizant of the weather coming in next week, and it's, as, you know, told by the people before us, it's been an unusual winter, to say the least.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Great, I just wanted to put on the record that the six months for the report was up March 2nd, but we were aware of the delay, and nobody objected to it, so I just wanna, before anybody complains that we're past our six months for this report, I wanna put on the record that we were all aware that this was being pushed out by two weeks, and nobody had an objection to it.
Ted, you wanna say anything? Tell us what you're doing in terms of marketing.
Good morning, again, my name's Ted Stover, I'm with Colliers International, I'm Senior Vice President there, and I specialize in new development and redevelopment properties. I have been contracted to, to sell the property, I plan on, I'm almost completed with a 30-page offering memorandum on the property, we've done quite a bit of research, and I plan on putting it out to market within the next week.
May be difficult to say, and if it is, you let me know, but what's, what's your thumbnail say about, can I be able to do this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's a dynamic, robust market right now, and it's, the amount of capital that's coming into this area is absolutely staggering, and I successfully put in a contract, the Sundowner in Reno, and from that, I've got a lot of contacts on, on hotel casino operators that wanna be in this area and looking for opportunities, so a high degree of confidence.
Okay, okay. Supervisor Barrett.
Yeah, brings to mind the question, you sound, you sound very confident, we need a willing buyer, willing seller situation, how willing is the seller at this juncture?
Very willing. We are very, very motivated.
Can you elaborate on that?
Well, what exactly are you asking me?
Well, it's been a number of years, as we all know, and price comes into, you know, the question becomes a matter of price, and I'm not asking you for your, for your definite assurances that the price will be low enough to attract, even though we have, as he said, a dynamic market, but there's a lot of money in that building.
There is a lot of money in that building, and if you're asking me if we are under the impression that we're going to get what we put into it, we are not, so they, they are very open-minded about what the market is, how long it's been sitting in the center of town, Dawn is 87 years old, my father-in-law is 80, so obviously, if they can get the place sold and retire happily now, that would be wonderful.
Okay, other board comments?
Yeah, one last thing.
Go, go, John.
If I, if my math is right, and it may not be, I'm not a great math wizard, you have about a year under this left, is that correct?
On my, my contract?
On, on the timeframe for this permit, before it runs out?
Correct.
Yeah?
Without further extension, this has another, about another year.
Well, I guess I'll ask you then, Lee, what does that, what does that require, if there were requests for an extension, I, I, I'm under the impression that they've run out, is that right?
I think, I think per the ordinance, that the Board of Supervisors can grant any subsequent extensions, but only the Board of Supervisors, yes, any, any request would come to the board.
Brad, Supervisor Bonkowski.
Kim, I bring this only as a suggestion, because in my Arts and Culture Commission meeting, Joel brought up that they attended a, an event that was held in a vacant hotel, and of course, bingo, it sparked in my brain, and it was quite an event, and it also showcased the facility and what was there in terms of marketing, so I just wanna put that out there as a thought.
Karen, was this in another city?
Sacramento.
Thank you, Karen, I'm not quite sure what the building requirements are for us to do something like that, so that would kinda be a question for Lee, but we've given Ted, he's, he's got full reign, so whatever we can do to help promote it, we are more than willing to do.
Ted, if you can tell me, how long was the escrow period on the Sundowner, or is it still in escrow?
We're still in escrow now.
My concern, if you can see where I'm going with this, is if we only have a year left under this permit, I would imagine that on a property like this, that the escrow period could exceed that, even if you went into escrow in the very near future, so I'm just, I would like your thoughts on, obviously, there are some very significant financial issues that are gonna come up if the building permit expires, so kinda walk me through, if we have 12 months, basically, that we would need to have the property closed in order to not lose the building permit, walk me through the timing of how this is all gonna work.
I, I don't see an escrow lasting 12 months, I see maybe a six-month escrow, most likely 60- to 90-day due diligence period, and then some sort of, of closing period, I think the, depending on what, what it looks like, it could be a quick-close type scenario, or it could be an extended close, which might involve, you know, gaming license, which would hold up, you know, any closing, but I don't see anything lasting more than six, six, seven months, quite honestly.
So then you have four or five months to get it under contract, right? Good job.
Yeah, that brings to mind the question of, how are you marketing it as a hotel or as a possible for anything?
Initially, I'm gonna be marketing it as a hotel/casino, there's a lot of improvements that have been done, and it makes most sense to, to market it as-is with the, with the existing use. In the event that that doesn't work, then look at maybe repurposing, but I don't see that, you know, changing much more than maybe it becomes a franchise hotel with some sort of convention element to it, you know, but then, you know, there's a large market for repurposed properties, senior housing, et cetera, but I don't see that, I see it as, you know, hotel/casino as-is, there's just too much done to it and too much value in it as it is right now.
This brings to mind a question, I guess I'll direct to Tom, the last time we talked out in the hallway, he had said that there still needs to be some work done in the tower, has anything progressed inside, is this all side work you've been doing?
Supervisor Barrett, it's all been outside work we've been doing since, I think it was our September meeting.
Okay, other comments, questions of the board? I know it's maybe a small matter, but I'd like to say thank you for having the fence down, and I know, you know, there's questions, I'd probably hear some about, you know, what happened in terms of the paving and stuff like that, and timing and things, but, you know, from a, from a community standpoint, I know a lot of people walk out of that legislative building, look across the street, it's nice to be able to see no fence there and see work going on, so, thanks, all right, all right, let's hang on, I know we got other public comment, I see some people back here who may wanna talk about this, but might have you come back up, okay, all right, any other questions from the board? I don't see any, thank you, go, Ted, go do good work, all right, thank you, Kimberly, thank you, Tom, all right, all right, public comment? Mr. LaPierre, good morning.
Mayor, Board, thank you, I know I probably sound like the crotchety old man that's yelling, get off my lawn, and I'm not even an old man, imagine what I'm gonna be like when I'm an old man, I tell ya.
I was gonna tell you, you don't, you don't look like an old man at all, I mean, you look like you're getting younger by the day, but...
I, I, I don't know about that. I don't know about that. The stuff like this keeps giving me gray hair. So, yeah, a couple of questions that I was hoping to hear the Board ask that I didn't hear asked. And before I get into that, a couple of points I want to make. On respect to the city admitting that this still is not done, the work's still not done on the outside, I remind you, they did nothing for 45 days. Nothing for 45 days. We met on September 17th, 2016. They did nothing for 45 days, past Nevada Day. My issue with the building permit is, I think at this point, is it gives them an inflated sense of value. And that inflated sense of value, there is value to that building permit and there's no doubt about that. And that is what it is. So in my day job, I sell real estate. That's what I do. From my understanding, from what their agent said, this is not even on the market yet. Six months later and we're not on the market? We don't even know what the asking price is. No one asked what the asking price is. Granted, you have nothing to say over the control of that, but it would be nice to know what the asking price is.
Garrett, I appreciate the comments and I know you're concerned about it and, you know, I think you speak for a whole lot of us here, but why would I want to ask the asking price? I mean, why would I want to get that far into a transaction, a private transaction? I mean, our responsibility here is, one, to try and get this property back in some form of economic stability. And it's a major landmark in our downtown area. And granted, it's been, you know, a problem for a number of years. But I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, what do I, even if they tell me what their asking price is, what do I do with that? What do, I mean, do I say, hey, that's too high, too low? I mean, I'm not, I'm really concerned about, you know, I don't necessarily, unless you tell me there's a reason why I need to get in those weeds, let me know. And another thing is, tell me what I do with the issue of 45 days? Do you say we should revoke the permit right now? Is that what your comment is? Go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. And good questions. So the asking price, I think, is important to hold them accountable to the general public of what they're asking for our property. So if you're asking an inflated price, that's never going to be realistic, that's important. That's important for what we're going through in this process. Again, you have no bearing and can do nothing on that. But I will say that there is a bill making its way through the legislature this session that will allow cities and counties to assess a special assessment on vacant buildings in order to motivate people to get them going and get them moving, whether selling them, whether putting tenants in there. Obviously, yet to be seen whether that bill happens, but if that tool ends up in your toolbox, I hope you use it.
I can tell you, I sit on the League of Cities and that's a League of Cities bill. It's running to some, call it static. Okay? All right.
I figured you'd find some opposition with that one. But Mr. Bonkowski said earlier in the previous meeting in September 17th that he expects escrow to run somewhere between 12 and 24 months. And we just heard that we think it's going to run six months. I tend to agree with Mr. Bonkowski that it's going to be longer. It's going to be a year to 24 months. That's my experience with that. Mr. Bonkowski knows what he's talking about. I would trust his opinion on that as well. The question I would have is, how long has the Sundowner escrow been going for? Just to kind of give us an idea. But here's the deal. If they found a buyer today, let's say we're 12 months away from having escrow closed, we're probably another six to 12 months away from having something opened. That puts us at almost 2020 to have something done. That would be two decades that this building has been sitting there. I understand the politics of this. I get it. I understand the politics, especially in this small town. I urge you to please do something. I do feel that the building permit gives them an inflated sense of value to the property. So maybe the right thing is to pull the building permit. What I'm really dismayed about is, six months later, it's still not on the market.
Garrett, before you leave, I know you've...
Don't run off, Garrett.
John's got a couple of questions here, but I don't...
Yeah, and I certainly understand your frustration and your desire to use leverage, if there is any leverage. But I have to echo the mayor. I don't know what I do with the asking price and that's why I asked the question the way I did. I'm sorry you're disappointed I didn't ask point-blank, but I did ask and try to elicit whether there was a really willing seller. And I understand your skepticism. I'm skeptical too. You and I have talked about this matter before and all of your concerns are valid ones for the community. But what would you have us do? You said, "Do something." What would you have us do?
I think if there's no building permit in there, that significantly decreases the value and motivates them to sell this property.
How do we get it done any faster than the year to two years you've talked about, then?
I would venture to say that them not having it on the market, six months later, is a violation of the agreement that you guys made with them earlier.
Could you point the language out that says that's a violation?
No, that's just my opinion. I'm not a lawyer.
A couple more questions, Garrett. Don't think you're under fire here.
I gave you guys a hard time. I expect one back.
So Garrett, thanks for, you know, bringing my previous statements up. I would clarify, though, that when I said, I actually said 12 to 18 months for an escrow would be reasonable for a development project or repurposing the property. If it's being marketed as a hotel casino, then I think Mr. Stover is correct that it could be a much faster escrow. And as you know, I only do commercial property and this is out of my area of expertise. So I'm not going to pretend to be the expert here. I have my own opinion about certain things, but this is out of my arena and that's why, you know, I was hopeful that somebody would be brought in that has that expertise. And I know Mr. Stover, so I know that he has those qualifications. Going back to some of the previous comments, I don't understand how revoking the permit helps us. I understand your comment that it devalues the property. That doesn't help us. That hurts us. We need the value of the property to be as high as possible to be able to get the project actually sold, going back to the willing seller. If there is a point at which they will just keep the property until it falls down and there is a point, there is a price point, that they would probably do that, I don't want to help them down that road. I want to help them down the road of getting the project sold, which means keep the value there as long as we are able to. Having said that, I can tell you, I can't see myself supporting any additional extensions. I'm not saying that I'll vote one way or the other a year from now, but it would be very difficult for me to support any additional extensions to a building permit.
And I echo what Brad says. And my concern is that, you know, if we let this, if we take away the building permit, then it triggers all-new code restrictions and so forth that they have to comply to, which devalues that building. And the whole goal is to continue the revitalization of our downtown. That building is a key part of it. So I want to see it sold. And so if we can enable that, that's extremely important.
John?
I will say what she said and then add as an addendum. We still have the hammer. That year actually helps us. It doesn't hurt us. Thank you, Garrett.
Okay. Garrett, you don't have to leave yet. Come on, man. All right. Other public comment? I don't see any and I'd like to say thanks to all the presenters. I mean, you know, we have questions about it and Mr. Lepierre, I got to tell you, conduct yourself very professionally. So, all right.
What he said.
For Kimberly, Mr. Metcalf and Mr. Stover, thank you. You know, we all kind of, and I'm sure you're probably echoing your thoughts too, you know, we're all trying to do what's right for, you know, the landowner plus what's right for our downtown. And, you know, and on the 45-day issue, you know, part of where I come from is, you know, we're seeing movement and we haven't seen that for years. And so, you know, that's, to me, that's helpful. Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? I don't see anybody. All right. So do we have to take a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's in order. Go ahead.
I move to approve the continuation of the extension of building permit 12-52 and fire permits 12-265 and 14-556 pursuant to the Board of Supervisors' approval of an 18-month extension of the subject permits on September 15th, 2016, subject to the next report from the property owner or his representative on September 7th, 2017.
There's a motion by Supervisor about Sacramento.
Question? Can I ask a question? I'm not sure...
Motion discussion. Good, in order. Thanks, question, John.
I'm not sure I understood the wording of that. That's 18 months from the six months ago, right?
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to be sure that's the way it was understood.
Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? We clear?
And just as a note, so that the Fiegans recognize, your next time will be September 7th. To already put that on your calendar.
All right.
You can come sooner.
With a sale. Yeah. I like it. That's good.
All right. Further discussion on the motion? I don't see any all-in-favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Carried unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to be in recess for 10 minutes and then we'll come back and we'll pick up the HRC stuff.
One holy hope.
I'm going to break the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order. We're now going to take up item 22 Bravo. This is to consider and possibly accept the HRC Historic Resources Commission Annual Report. Who's doing this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Hope Sullivan.
Let Mr. Drews do this. Get him in there, Hope. Get him.
You good, Mayor?
No, I'm good. Go, go, Hope. Come on.
Hope Sullivan, planning manager. Annually, the Historic Resource Commission needs to make an annual report to the Board of Supervisors. This should have occurred last month, but due to weather, we had to cancel our January meeting, so the Board didn't vote on the annual report till February, so we're presenting in March. And our Chair, Mike Drews, has joined me this morning to make the presentation.
Thank you, Hope. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. Good to be back again. As you know, the Historic Resources Commission, formerly known as the Architectural Resource Committee, was formed in May of 1981. Carson City Supervisors designated the Historic District in May of '82, and we've pretty much been rolling since then. The Historic District was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2011, so we finally have national recognition for the district. We're a seven-member board. It consists of building design and historic preservation professionals, as well as members of the, or residents within the district. In 2016, we held, we had 48 applications that were reviewed. Of those, 26 were administratively approved. We started doing administrative approvals about five years ago, and they've really streamlined the process. They affect re-roofs, fences that meet our design guidelines, real simple things, so that the applicants don't have to come before us at our regular meetings and present their case. If it meets our standards, we go ahead and approve those. In 2016, we almost doubled the number of applications that we had previously in 2015. As you remember, in May of last year, as part of Historic Preservation Month, we presented some Historic Preservation Awards. They went to the Nevada State Railroad Museum and to several of the restoration specialists who work at the museum and restored the Glenbrook, as well as have worked on the Inyo and other restoration efforts at the museum. It's a wonderful asset for the community, and the work they do is just spectacular. We're going to do those again this year in May, and we have, we'll have some recommendations, or we have some recommendations, and we'll put that forth in May to you guys. We completed the scavenger hunt in the Historic District again. It's a real fun event. We look at architectural details within the district, take pictures of them, people get to identify them. And Karen is nice enough to award a lunch at Adele's, so the winner gets a nice reward for playing with us. Want to thank Luanne Spoldageris for her efforts in putting it together last year. It's a lot of work, a lot more work than people realize. You have to match addresses with photographs and, you know, things change. People paint, people remove things, or people add things, lighting changes. So there's a lot of update that goes into that all the time. Last year, we were awarded $75,000 as part of the Historic Preservation Fund grant. That went to, oh, almost about a five-day training with the National Association, Alliance of Preservation Commissions in Mobile, Alabama. Both the Community Development Staff members and myself went and attended that. The end of April, we're putting on a, it's a camp program that NAPC puts out. It's the Commission Assistance Mentoring Program. The camp team comes out and actually does training for Historic Commission members. We've invited the Virginia City, the Comstock Historic Commission, as well as the Reno Historic Commission to attend those meetings with us, so we can all talk about similar problems and solutions and get on the same page with training. We also had some of that funding go to an Historic Structures report for the Nevada State Prison, trying to help them continue with their open, their efforts to open that up to the public. This year, we've requested $38,000 from the HPC program to help upgrade the Blue Line mobile app. We're going to try to get a couple local beacons installed, so it'll be GPS location activated. It'll know where you are when and start talking to you, so hopefully we'll get funded for that and continue our efforts along the Blue Line. The HPF grants require a 40% match. That's been met by a lot of staff time and a lot of Commission member time as well. We've worked with the preservation, the prison preservation group to help them with a lot of things with that HSR grant. So it works pretty well. We try to keep the cost down, just because that 40% match is a pretty tough match to meet. So that's where we are. That's kind of where we're going. At your last meeting, I really liked Brad's idea about the East Side, and I think we can, we can start integrating some of that into our discussion as well. I would really like to thank the Community Development Staff, Hope, and Lee, and Rhea, and Susan have just, they make this commission work, and their efforts and their time here are what make this commission as effective as it is. I want to thank them as well. Any questions?
I think one, Michael, thank you for the report, and thank you for the kind words about the staff. You know, and I think, you know, it's hard to think that this has been in existence since 1981, 1982. But, you know, it's, these are sometimes not easy decisions to make. And, you know, but it's the right thing. And I agree with you about Supervisor Bonkowski said, let's see, you know, about, there are other areas in town that we can take a look at. And, you know, so I think from all of us, thanks to your HRC for what it does, and thanks, and please pass that on to your members. And I know we're going to have another appointment coming up, so I think, okay, all right. All right. Further questions on the report? Anybody? Public want to weigh in on this one? Let me, can you offline talk to me about the prison? About where they are? They need, they need some help? Okay, all right. All right. Motion's in order.
I move to accept the 2016 Historic Resources Commission Annual Report as presented by staff.
There's a motion, a second, and a motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Carried unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Please pass on our comments to your board. Okay, all right. All right. Let's see. Now, we're going to take up items 22 Charlie and Delta together. For hearing purposes, we will make individual motions. These are related to the airport zoning. They're zoning near the airport. There's a disclosure by Supervisor Bonkowski on both of these, or one of them, anyway.
Both.
Both.
Both. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. Although I have been working on this item in front of us for the last two years, NAI just recently listed for sale several of the parcels that are affected by the zoning changes before the Board today. Therefore, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be material affected by my commitment, and as such, I will not be voting on this matter. However, since I initiated these changes and have expertise on this subject, I will come down from the podium, or to the podium, and answer any questions that the Board may have.
Okay. Also, I want to make a disclosure. The last time, this kind of was before us, Maurice White indicated that I might have a conflict because, one, my former law partner, you know, Steve Takis is counsel to the Airport Authority, and also that he suggested that my firm represents Miles Construction, who may have some interest in their property owner there. I've been required of that. We do not represent Miles Construction on this issue. I don't know if we do at all, but we're not on this issue. And I don't see the potential conflict with respect to Mr. Takis being counsel to the Airport Board, because this is a city zoning issue. The Airport Authority's weighed in on it. So I, with that disclosure, I just want to, I didn't see Maurice here today, but I want to make sure that, you know, we say that. So I don't see a particular conflict, so I will be participating in its entirety. Okay? All right. Who's going to lead us through
So the general consensus at the January meeting was, yes, the property owners would be in support of this proposal with a couple of exceptions. And one in the area of the air industrial park, and I'm actually going to move to the current zoning, so you can see, there are sections of air industrial park, public community on the north side, and then limited industrial on the east side. So the general consensus was, yes, we're in support, but for the air industrial park area, there was a concern that retail uses and commercial uses that would be allowed in retail commercial zoning and general commercial zoning that would typically roll up into the industrial zones really aren't appropriate in the industrial area, just because that's a manufacturing area, and if it were to change to general industrial and even heavier manufacturing area. So they had made the suggestion that we eliminate retail uses from the area that would change from air industrial park to general industrial. That was the first piece. The second piece, on the east side of the airport, was related to uses that are illegal at a federal level. And this is input received from the Airport Authority. Basically, because they are heavily involved with federal funding, they were concerned that uses that are illegal on a federal level but legal on a local level and a state level, for example marijuana, would potentially jeopardize federal funding for them. And so their input was, if there are properties that are adjacent to the airport, share a boundary essentially, we would like to see those federally illegal uses be eliminated. And so that was the second proposal. So as a result of that, staff took back those suggestions and then came back to the board to ask for the board to initiate this process in November of 2016. And the board, as you'll recall, did vote to initiate it, and then staff went back and had a meeting with the Airport Authority and Planning Commission, and here we are today. A couple changes, though, I want to note. Initially, what we had planned to do with the zoning code amendment was to specifically exclude properties in the area that would be air industrial park to general industrial for the retail. But we found that that would be very cumbersome from a staff enforcement standpoint. So we determined as a staff that it would be better to just create a new zoning district. And so that's what we're proposing. We're proposing on the north side, and this is the proposed zoning here, we're proposing a new industrial district called General Industrial Airport. And essentially, what that is, is the general industrial uses, same as regular general industrial zoning, but with the exclusion of any uses in the commercial zoning district. And then on the other piece, for the general industrial, we are proposing the zoning code amendment where it excludes any property that is adjacent to the airport. The illegal use at a federal level would not be allowed. And so that would be throughout the entire general industrial area. So this is the proposed zoning, and that's the second part, the zoning map amendment. So we're changing the zoning code, and then we're also proposing to change the zoning map. And so what we're proposing is General Industrial Airport to the north of the airport, which is blue on your screen, General Industrial, which is green, to the east of the airport. And then a piece that staff discovered when we were going through this, we determined that there was a split zone on the airport parcel itself. They are currently zoned limited industrial and public regional, but it's really more appropriate for them to be public regional completely. And so we're proposing that the area in yellow be changed to public regional as well. There is, I think, a change in the zoning district that I would like to propose. There's just a slight language change, and I'll just get to that really quick. Under the General Industrial Airport, it's on page 409, any permitted use as listed, any permitted use listed in any commercial district unless specifically listed as an allowed use in GIA, LI, AIP, or GI. And so the proposed language would be just to eliminate everything beyond the word district. So it would just say that any permitted use listed in any commercial district would be prohibited, because it's really, the language is redundant, and it's not necessary to have that last piece. So I'm proposing that change between first reading today and second reading. I think that covers it, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions of anybody at the panel?
My only question is, with regards to, and as you brought up, the marijuana industry, where we have designated that zoning does not, is not impacted at all with this change in zoning, correct?
It's actually expanded with this zoning. It would be allowed in the general industrial area in the green, except where it's adjacent to the airport, and it would also be allowed in the general industrial airport area. And that would just be production cultivation and laboratories, because dispensaries are only allowed along Highway 50 and South Carson Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, would you repeat the change, the last one that you just talked about? I was a little slow on the uptake.
Sure. So on page 409, and this is prohibited uses proposed within the General Industrial Airport District, and that's the new district. What it says currently is, any permitted use listed in any commercial district unless it's specifically listed as an allowed use in GIA, LI, AIP, or GI. And in going back and looking at that, there really isn't a, there aren't any commercial uses listed in those, so it's really not necessary to put that additional language. We can just leave it at any permitted use listed in any commercial district.
Other questions? Go.
So in considering this, what I'd like to understand and help the public understand is, why is it necessary to do this rezoning? What type of businesses or activity are we looking to expand in this area? I mean, what's the purpose? Why is it not sufficient as is?
So in the case of general, of the air industrial park area in particular, and I'm just going to refer back to one of my earlier staff reports, because it does reference the air industrial park zoning district, I believe. Sorry, if you could just bear with me for a minute. Air industrial park in particular is incredibly limiting. And it was done that way on purpose, because, I'm sorry, I don't see it. Anyway, I'm just going to speak from memory. It's, basically, it restricts to airport-related uses. And while that's appropriate, if you look on the map, you'll see there's, right now, the air industrial park, and I'm going to go back actually to the previous zoning. Air industrial park is not only the area in blue here, it's all of this area as well. And while it certainly makes sense that air industrial park, which is limited to airport-related manufacturing uses and some limited industrial-type uses, it's appropriate on the south side of Arrowhead Drive because it's adjacent to the airport. But as you're on the north side of Arrowhead Drive, you're really getting away from that airport adjacency, and so those airport-specific uses are not necessarily going to be as interested in the property on the north side of Arrowhead, as opposed to the south, where they can be closer and potentially have runway access right from their property. So we are limited in the amount of general industrial land that we have in Carson City right now. And frankly, there isn't a lot of buildable general industrial land. A lot of it has buildings on it already. We felt that it would be appropriate to expand so that we could allow more uses, not only in that area, but also on the east. And on the east side, I'll just kind of say, limited industrial right now. So the difference, the main difference between limited industrial and general industrials, limited industrial is manufacturing from previously assembled or previously created parts, whereas general industrial is manufacturing that could be from raw materials. And that's typically in more intense use than limited industrial. And so that's kind of the difference between the two. Now, any use in limited industrial is allowed in general industrial typically. So we're just looking for a way to make Carson City more competitive and offer a little bit more in the way of manufacturing space.
And then, just so that I can clarify or ensure that I understood this, are you saying that now the manufacturing of marijuana would be allowed in this area where we had not allowed it previously in our zoning decisions?
So the way that the zoning code reads currently, from when we did the modifications for medical marijuana, we had defined where they were allowed by section township and range. And the areas where the medical marijuana are, it's currently allowed, it's base, it's the same section township mid-range as what we're proposing right now. So I'm going to show you right here. This is the only general industrial in the area right now where I have the arrow. Medical marijuana is allowed right there, right now. And that's within the appropriate section township and range. There's also an area right here that's general industrial, where medical marijuana is also currently allowed because of its location within that section township and range. So while you're correct, these areas, the new GIA and the new GI, didn't allow them before because they're in that same section township and range, they would be allowed now with this.
Say that again, please, the last part?
So essentially, since we're expanding the general industrial zoning district and creating a new general industrial airport zoning district, they're within the section township mid-range where medical marijuana is currently allowed, so this would be expanded area where medical marijuana could potentially locate.
But you are talking production or grow, you're not talking dispensary?
Correct. There's, dispensaries are not currently allowed in this area. They're only allowed along Highway 50 in the general industrial district and along South Carson Street in the general commercial district. And I think Supervisor Bonkowski would like to add something.
For the record, Brad Bonkowski, owner, broker, NAI Alliance. If you look in the parcels in the green to the east of the airport, that the proposed zoning is to change it to GI, you'll see what is a road easement that goes north, south, through the middle of the green, that's labeled Lamont, I believe is drive. So the only parcels that would be added to where production or cultivation would be allowed would be the parcels to the east of Lamont Drive, because everything to the west is adjacent to the airport. So you'd be looking at, there's some existing buildings there that front onto Arrowhead Drive, then there's one, two, three, I believe four additional vacant parcels that would be added. But the vast majority of that that you see in green would not be allowed because it's all adjacent to the airport.
So my question, when you had the meeting in January with the property owners in that area, were they aware that marijuana cultivation would be now allowable on those others? You know, I just, I just want to make sure that everyone understood, and sometimes we have unintended consequences, and that there's no issue, because I just want to make sure.
I, while I don't specifically recall, I believe that they were aware, because we had a lengthy discussion about the airport not wanting medical marijuana adjacent to their properties during that meeting.
That's also the way I recollect the conversation.
Yeah, first of all, how much acreage is going to expand manufacturing? It's open land still, if you know?
Forty-seven acres in the open land, in the green area.
Secondarily, because I serve on the Airport Commission and I heard Maurice's comments, which I'm sure you also know about, he made the, he raised the issue that this is spot zoning. I didn't disagree with him. I just said I didn't see that we were going to be able to do a master plan amendment, from what I've learned since I came on the board, or a full master plan review anytime soon, because it's an expensive process and et cetera, et cetera. Don't have as much staff as we used to have when we did one last. So my comment to him was that if his spot zoning comment was correct, it still didn't matter, because we need to move forward anyway. But would somebody address the issue of spot zoning on this?
I will, Community Development Director Lee Plemel. I will address that. This is not spot zoning. This is industrial zoning consistent with the master plan designation for these properties with, by any reasonable legal interpretation, is certainly not spot zoning on that alone. Furthermore, this isn't a very small area. This is multiple parcels, so I'm quite confident this is not spot zoning. And we don't need a master plan amendment to do this.
And we didn't talk about this before. I thought that might be the answer, but I wanted to get it on the record. But I didn't ask you before on purpose.
I might add, too, that typically, when you're looking at zoning uses and intensities, you go through a buffering process, and you want to buffer high-intense uses from low-intent intensity uses like residential. So again, on the east side of the airport, you're going from general industrial uses, which are the most intense, to the east side of Arrowhead Drive, which is limited industrial, to then some open space and some residential uses. So this follows what I would consider to be standard practice with zoning and the buffering practices that you would see between the uses as well.
Finally, a comment, maybe it's early, but I would hope that this all, this discussion gets out as fully as possible, so that if anybody does have concerns about medical marijuana, despite your recollections, that they, and they own property in that area, that they be forewarned that that's a possibility that's coming. I don't know how we do that, except I look at the back of the room and see somebody who might be able to.
They could lodge issues in writing to planning for us to consider by second reading. That's how, I mean, that's how the public could weigh in. They could send in some comments and send them to us.
Yeah, so just a couple things to respond to that. The, I think we sent out somewhere in the neighborhood of 760 notices to property owners, not only that where their zoning was being proposed to be changed, but also surrounding properties. A medical marijuana facility in any form requires a special use permit, which is also another public noticing process. And I believe that there may only be one or two certificates left for medical marijuana cultivation at the state level at this point that would even be an option to possibly move to this area. And that's not to say that the state isn't going to have another open period, obviously, but just something to note for the record.
Other board comments? Let me ask a question that's kind of on point but not. There's a new development of a storage unit out there? Is, are stor, I assume storage units are approved, but is that taking up land that could be used for industrial buildings?
It's actually in the current general industrial zoning district. I think it's this parcel. Mm-hmm. And it is an allowed use by right in the general industrial district, yes.
Think about that one. All right. All right. Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? I don't see anybody. Okay, then let's take up 22 Charlie. Anybody want to make a motion on that one? Supervisor, go.
I move to introduce on first reading, an ordinance amending the Carson City Municipal Code Title 18, zoning, Chapter 18.04, Use Districts, Section 18.04.010. District established to add a new zoning district, General Industrial Airport, to the list of industrial districts. Amending Section 18.04.150, General Industrial, to prohibit federally illegal uses on parcels that share a boundary with land owned by the Carson City Airport. Adding a new Section 18.04.152, General Industrial Airport, to create a new zoning district in the vicinity of the Carson City Airport, allowing all manufacturing uses allowed in the general industrial zoning district, but prohibiting all commercial uses allowed in the general industrial zoning district. And amending Section 18.04.195, non-residential districts' intensity and dimensional standards to add site development standards for the new General Industrial Airport zoning district based on the findings in the staff report, with the suggested change in the language as presented here today.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Sue, did you have? Sue, did you have?
Yes, that is Bill Number 107.
Bill Number 107.
Bill Number 107.
Record reflecting Bill Number 107.
Okay.
Okay. On a motion, further discussion?
I just wanted to say that, given the Community Development Director's statement that this is not spot zoning, and Brad also weighed in on that, and the fact that we do need more manufacturing property out there, I am still concerned, I'm not a real fan of putting more marijuana facilities in there, especially with what's going on at the state level, but I'm glad to hear that that might not be too, you know, too possible anyway. But 47 acres would be nice. So I'm going to vote for it. But I still would love to see the marijuana stay out of there, not because I'm against marijuana, but because I suspect there will be some people who are against it out there. And their concerns are legitimate now that we're going to recreational, I think.
Okay. Other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Got that? All right. Let's take up 22 Delta. Motion's in order, Supervisor Abad.
I move to direct staff to initiate a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment for certain parcels in the vicinity of the Carson City Airport from Air Industrial Park, Limited Industrial, and Public Community to General Industrial with certain land.
Sorry to interrupt, but the motion is on page 442. We're not initiating, we're adopting, we're introducing.
On 422?
442.
Oh, sorry. Mine's on 422 with the proposed motion? So you want me to go to 442?
That's an old staff report.
But that's backup material.
Oh, sorry.
Wait, 442, I apologize.
It's, okay.
Yeah.
Add a bill number.
Which is?
108.
108. Okay. Bill 108. Okay. I move to introduce on first reading Bill 108, an ordinance to change the zoning from Air Industrial Park and Public Community to General Industrial Airport on properties located in the vicinity of the Carson City Airport, generally located north of Arrowhead Drive and south of Conestoga Drive, east of Gonai Road, and west of the eastern section line of Section 33 Township 16 North and Range 20 East, to change the zoning from limited industrial to general industrial on properties generally located east of the Carson City Airport and south of Arrowhead Drive. And to change the zoning from public regional and limited industrial to public regional on the Carson City Airport property located at 2600 College Parkway with specific APNs as posted on the agenda based on the findings in the staff report.
Motion and a second on a motion discussion.
I see.
Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
I got it.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Good job, Supervisor Bonkowski.
We'll be back for second reading on April 6.
Good. All right. All right, let's take up 22 Echo, Blackstone Development Group. Hope, you going to do this? You need a minute? Need a minute to get set up, Hope?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. This is a request for 189 single-family residential lots on 44.5 acres. It's part of the Lampa Ranch specific plan area. The property is located south of East Robinson Street, west of North Solomon Road, and north of East Fifth Street. The site is approved for SF 6000 zoning and constitutes the first phase of Lampa Ranch. I have up on the slide the specific plan area, and I'd like to speak to the specific plan for a minute. Lampa Ranch specific plans want four specific plans identified in the city's master plan. The specific plans in general require development proposals in an area to be reviewed in a comprehensive manner. The policies of a specific plan provide the framework for development in the specific plan area. In the case of the Lampa Ranch specific plan, what that specific plan says is there needs to be a phasing plan to address water, sewer, roadways, transportation, and stormwater in a comprehensive manner. And that phasing plan is to be completed prior to the first construction permit. So this way, as phases build out, there's a comprehensive plan, if you will, on how the road system should work, how the sewer and water system should be installed and things are sized properly to allow ultimate build-out. Right before this meeting in the hallway, the applicant handed me a stack of paper about the size of the New York City phone book, which is their phasing plan. So we obviously have another draft of that phasing plan. But again, staff has right, per the specific plan, the phasing plan would need to be approved. It's not approved but submitted prior to the first construction permit. Since this tentative map that's before you today is the first project or the first phase of the specific plan, the improvements associated with this tentative map will probably constitute the first construction permit.
How do we do this if there's a new phasing plan?
I beg your pardon?
How do we do this today if there's a new phasing plan?
The phasing plan has been in the works and it's in response to comments. So what I can speak to is sort of sequentially how this works.
I got you, but how do we go on, how do we?
I think the conditions.
How do we go forward on part of it without a phasing plan in place?
Understood. The applicant has been responding kind of in advance to the comments that staff has put in the report, trying to make things move as quickly as possible. So the staff is independently looking at the phasing plan. We provided comments and received a response to those comments. So essentially, the conditions are in your staff report. I anticipate what they handed me this morning is in response to those recommended conditions. I don't anticipate inconsistencies. And if they are, the staff's recommendations are based on technical data and our recommendations are not going to change based on what was submitted today.
All right. All right. Keep going.
So as part of the specific plan, there's also two parks required, one on each side of 580, open spaces and trails. The Parks Department has recommended certain milestones to ensure progress towards these improvements so as to avoid stopping development at some point because the park needs to be built and it hasn't been built. The specific plan also addresses fire impacts, specifically requesting a $1,000 fee per dwelling unit or other mitigation. And the conditions of approval, as I just spoke to the mayor about, do address a number of the items in the specific plan that need to be housed in this phasing plan. So in the staff report, you'll see conditions of approval that are associated with the phasing plan. Sequentially, how we see this happening, because the phasing plan gets approved with the first construction permit, we will need to have agreement, staff agreement on this phasing plan prior to the first construction permit. The phasing plan would then be memorialized in a development agreement that would need to be fully executed prior to board review and approval of a final map. So no lots get created until the phasing plan is memorialized in a development agreement. In terms of the tentative map, there's 189 lots. Ninety-six lots have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. Ninety-three have a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. There are two access points, one on Robinson and one on Solomon. Per the municipal code, Section 1707, there are 12 required findings of fact. I'm happy to go through those findings if you'd like, but I think for now I'll just go to some modifications I've made to the conditions of approval based on inquiries from the board members. You have late material at your seat. It's also available to the public. So working off that, and this is just a summary, and I have reviewed this with the applicant and the applicant is agreeable to all the modifications. The modification to number 40 is clarification that the development agreement must be fully executed prior to construction of improvements not associated with a subdivision. The Community Development Director, quite smart, noted that there are apartments as part of this project, so if we simply said we needed the fully executed development agreement prior to final map, that didn't speak to things that didn't require subdivision. So we caught that mistake and have included wording in Condition 40 to address it. Secondly, on Condition 40, we want to include wording that says the conditions of approval take precedence over the specific plan. The concern was, as noted in the staff report, the specific plan says the city will not collect a park tax, but the DA's office has advised us we're required to collect the park tax. So we want to be very clear that these conditions of approval are taking precedence. Also on number 40, only the board may modify the conditions of approval. There was concern from one board member that this be understood, that this doesn't change. This is what is approved. And so we feel like if this is a board approval, any modification should be subject to the same review as the initial conditions of approval. On Condition 57, I've broken that out into an A and a B. I had a lot of questions about Condition 57, which was looking at the level of service during school hours, and it really was sort of getting at the connection to William Street and Highway 50 in what everyone presumes will be Goldust Way. So to make it easy, not just for the board and the staff and the applicant, but anyone who's considering purchasing land at Lampa Ranch to build, we want to just put a hard number in there. There was, I think it was a January 2017 traffic report that said that the Lampa Ranch area west of the highway could function without the connection to William Street at a 65% build-out. That translates into 810 dwelling units. So we have included a Condition 57B, which recognizes that the maximum number of dwelling units is 810 on that west side if the connection to William Street is not constructed and accepted by the city. Modifications to 59C, I think there was some confusion in the condition and that said an HOA or an LMD. The intention was an HOA will be responsible for the maintenance and operation of the public facilities, parks, open space, and so on. And so we have proposed to strike the reference to the LMD, but we're going to talk about the LMD in one sec. We also want to clarify that the O and N, or the operation and maintenance standards will include policies regarding replacement and repair of equipment. Some supervisors noticed that there were certain equipment or improvements called out in the specific plan and wanted to be clear that as part of operating and maintaining these facilities, there was also a responsibility for replacement and repair. So those policies were always intended to be specifically addressed, but they've now been called out to promote clarity. And on 59D, we've added language to state that deed restriction would be placed on the properties in the specific plan area, recognizing an obligation to maintain the facilities in perpetuity and recognizing that landscape maintenance district would be utilized should the HOA not succeed. This is the same language that was applied as part of the Vintage project and the Parks and Rec Director encouraged that we definitely want an HOA to be maintaining it, but we need to have a game plan should the HOA not succeed. And that would be, we would have the framework for an LMD ready to go should the HOA not succeed. So those are modifications that were in response to board comments. My understanding in talking to the applicant is they are agreeable to all conditions of approval recommended by the staff. We do have Mike Raely, Josh Myers, and Lauren Chilston, and some other folks on behalf of the team here, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Well said, Hope. Thank you. Supervisor Bonkowski, before we bring up the rest of the team here.
Yes, just on the changes, Hope, on Condition 59D, on the last paragraph that was added, the second line, let me know when you're there.
I'm there.
Okay. Second line says the restrictions will provide that should the HOA ever cease to exist, an assessment will then be implemented. Can we look at adding language that says or becomes inactive? Because there are several HOAs in the city that still exist but are inactive, which is essentially not existing.
I think that's an important addition. Thank you.
Hope, my concern is how are the schools' issues being addressed in this? And how restrictive are we being on this? Because it's my understanding the school is not triggered till there's 749 homes, something like that. But there's still an impact to the schools and no clear path as to how they're going to be able to build a school in that subdivision. So if you can address that.
Yes. I address that at the Planning Commission. I kind of glossed over the findings at the board level, but I do want to talk about Finding 4, and I talked about that with the Planning Commission. Finding 4 talks about the availability of public services, including schools. The school's concerned. There's a letter in your packet. The school hasn't seen this creature for a very long time. In my tenure, what we've had here is Arbor Villas, which is an attached unit, Mills Landing, an attached unit, Vintage, which at the time of review was an age-restricted unit. This is the first project where the school thinks they're going to realize an influx of students sitting at desk. I have sat with the school, and I think we have four members of the school district staff present to speak more specifically, but I have sat with them and they're not really, my takeaway is they're not sure how they're funding this. And they're concerned because there is a demand for an elementary school. These lots will translate to houses, which translates to students who need a desk, right? And so that is definitely a concern of the school. Having said that, because they haven't seen this creature in some time, lots getting created that will ultimately translate into students, they didn't know what to bring to the table, is my takeaway. They said, well, we don't know what we're supposed to ask for. So they said, we know we're going to have an impact. We know we're maximizing our capacity. We did talk about the growth management ordinance and policies of the city, which would stagger the timing of those units being realized. And so I think I'll stop there, and I'm going to let the school speak for themselves.
Follow-up, and I guess I didn't understand what was just said there. I apologize. I mean, in other words, there's no answer to the school. Is that the school system? I mean, I share the same concerns that Supervisor Abad said, and what I hear you saying is that they have a concern, but there's nothing in here that has addressed that concern.
Right. What I did was, and the way I explained it to the Planning Commission is, and I'm being as candid as I know how to be.
You always are.
No, 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 no. I didn't mean to imply anything. What I told the Planning Commission, and I'll tell you today, is the school is concerned. Make no mistake about it. The school does not, did not, at the time I took this to Planning Commission, know what to ask for. So what I said to the Planning Commission is just that. And I said, at this point, the school is not specifically requesting a mitigation measure based on Finding 4, but I'm speaking to this in anticipation that the next one that comes in, you will hear more from the school. So whether or not the school now has had, you know, a month to think about it, and when they said to me, well, what do we do? I said, well, check with other school districts. I don't know what schools do in Nevada. So I suspect they'll speak for themselves, maybe come up with ideas, but my comment to the Planning Commission to you is there is concern. I don't know what the right mitigation is, and I have not recommended a mitigation measure nor had the school in their letter to you.
So I guess one of the questions I have, Mr. Stokes, you're going to be here when you get a chance, is, is the developer aware that the school's concerned?
Yes, the developer has seen the letter from the school. They participated in the last master plan meeting that the school had. They sent a representative to that. My understanding is they have sat down with the school district. And in preparation for this board meeting today, I did let the applicant know that there is concern out there about the school and the school's ability to provide its facility for these future students. So the applicant is aware that there is a concern and that the school has a concern. It's been well communicated.
And the applicant knows that, at least from my perspective, I'm a former member of the school board. If they're looking for a little bit of leverage. Okay? All right. All right. Supervisor Bonkowski.
So what I'm hearing you say, Hope, is that although there's no mitigation on the school issue today, it will probably come up in one of the next tentative map approvals or phases that come up?
That would be my anticipation, although the, right. But the school district is present today, and I suspect they're prepared. today, and I suspect they're prepared to talk to the board. But at the time of the planning commission, your description was correct. I didn't want everyone to think that the school was not going to come forward with something because I felt very certain they would.
And just for clarification, I thought there was one mitigation, which was the relocation of the loading zone?
Correct. The school buses currently load and have for the last 15 years along Robinson Street. When they load and unload, they're required to have flashers on, which means traffic stops, which then compromises the capacity, if you will, of Robinson Street. So what staff has recommended as a condition of approval, and the applicant has agreed to, and the school, I think, I believe is in agreement with this, is the inclusion of improvements as part of the improvement plans for this tentative map. Those improvements will include improvements on the school property to accommodate loading and offloading of buses. The school has the land to accommodate that. They don't have the money to build it. And that will then yield full functionality of Robinson Street. So I guess I didn't bring that up because that's not finding for public facilities. That's more a traffic issue. So yes, that condition is in there.
Okay, if we go to page 3-6 of the specific plan, and our packet is page 550, there is, it's under 3.4, stormwater management. It calls for a detailed wetlands delineation provided in the final SPA identifying any areas that meet the federal 404 definition of wetlands. And my understanding is that that was not in the conditions because it's already been provided?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll wait for the applicant to come up to ask that. The road that connects to Fifth Street, I brought this up when we did the approval of the SPA and the zoning change. To me, it appears that where the road is located on the map is currently hitting South Street behind where the concrete barrier of the overpass is. So when the applicant comes up, I would like an explanation on how that's going to work for westbound traffic on Fifth Street to make that, or if that road is going to have to be relocated to the west side of the two ranch house parcels. And then, this doesn't have a page number on it, but there is a site plan that shows the rerouting of a new drainage channel along Fifth Street, and then it turns north.
I have it up there.
Yes, that is the one. I'd also like an explanation about the impacts of adding 690-degree turns to a drainage channel and how that's going to work. So just if you can answer those when the applicant comes up.
Any other questions, staff, before we hear from Blackstone? I don't see any. Who's here? Who do we have? I know, come on up. Good morning. How are you folks doing today?
Good morning.
Good.
Good morning. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, representing Blackstone Development Group. With me is Lauren Chilson from Traffic Works, project traffic engineer, Josh Myers with Blackstone Development Group, and representatives from Ryder Homes, who will be the home builder for Phase One.
So they're all here?
They're all here.
So we've got Mike and Lauren's right here, right?
Lauren, yes, sir.
Lauren, Lauren, okay, thank you.
I think Hope did a very thorough job in the staff report. I have a quick PowerPoint. It's fairly brief. I think Hope and staff did a great job in terms of identifying the issues. But if we could just go through this real quickly, the site just south of the high school, east of Solomon, about 44 and a half acres for Phase One. Next page. This is just an overview of the existing master plan and zoning. It's medium-density residential in the master plan and SF6 zoning, so we're in full compliance with the existing zoning and master plan regulations, as well as all the provisions of the specific plan. This is the same plan that was up a few moments ago. 189 lots within Phase One, provides the first links of the overall trail system. We incorporate all the standards from Lampa Ranch, so this is essentially the kickoff to what's to come, so to speak. It does include about 10.8 acres of common area and open space. This provides you just with an overall summary of Phase One. So as you'll see, 44 and a half acres, 189 units, total lot area, just over 31 acres. Overall, we end up with about 4.25 dwelling units per acre, with lot sizes ranging from just over 6,000 square feet to about 13,700 square feet. As I mentioned, this is the, really the first phase that will start to implement the vision of the Lampa Ranch specific plan and those amenities that it included. There will be a homeowners association or LMA that will provide all the maintenance of the common areas. It's, excuse me, designed to be consistent with all the standards. It provides for connectivity with future developments, so our roadways are planned to connect with the future phases in the neighborhood, so everything is intertwined. We have coordinated-
While you're on that, just talk to me about the homeowners association. I know we had an issue. Who's on the first homeowners association, and how, what's the governing? How long are they going to be there? And who is it?
I believe, and let me look back.
It's 70%?
It would be controlled by the builder until the project is 75% built out, and then it would turn back over to the residents.
75% of this phase or the whole project?
It's an overall total.
So the builder would be, remain in place for the complete buildout of Lampa Ranch?
Correct. Now, the specific plan does allow for sub homeowners associations. So for example, if you had a gated community within there, they would have a sub homeowners association that they might be turned out faster. But I think that, like a master developer representative, it's my understanding, and I might refer to somebody smarter than me on how the state law works, but it, there is a control point at 75% where it gets turned over. So it could be the master developer, it might not be the homeowners, the home builders, which is how it works in most big, large-scale master plan communities. It's the master developer that controls it.
And I guess the question, you know, the issue there is, you know, and I know the law seeks to address this, but you know, you put a homeowners association in, and then all of a sudden, you know, whether they're inactive or they don't do anything, and then, you know, we don't have anybody to talk to.
Right. And that's why I think we, with the conditions, to have the ability to do an LMA is probably a better way to go, and we're fine with doing an LMA rather than an HOA, that provides that assurance that should the homeowners association become inactive for some reason, there's a mechanism to keep up the maintenance.
So I want to hear. Okay. Laurie, do you have a question?
Well, I think in general, my concern with the entire project is the, because it's phased in and there's multiple, potentially multiple different builders, I'm looking for, how does the developer, they owe us all of the conditions of approval. It's not Ryder Homes that has to meet the conditions, it's the developer. And I'm concerned, and maybe that's part of the phasing that I don't see, but I'm concerned on how we ensure that maybe only 189 get built and nothing else happens, and I have a partial project sitting there. So I'm just looking globally, how do we protect this whole area? Does the master developer have each home builder, like Ryder, contribute money into a fund that goes to do the whole required kickoffs at each level? I mean, how does that work?
Well, the master developer would negotiate, you know, whether he's going to do improvements or the builder will do improvements. That's all negotiated, but it comes down, at the bottom line, at the end of the day, those improvements get done, and that becomes a private negotiation between them for each individual phase. But they do have to make sure that the conditions are met and that those improvements are done, and that all the standard, or all the conditions that are in the tenant map, as far as what improvements are going to be required within each phase, are completed and accepted by the city. Does that make sense?
I'm just concerned that we don't get left halfway with the project.
Sure. And so, but as those are being done, those are all being put into the LMA, for example, to ensure that they're maintained and that they're ongoing. Now, I can't speak that if we have an economic crash, that things will slow down for future phases, but there is a mechanism to maintain what's in place and to keep that theme, the theme and the standards that are included in the SPA going. So.
Am I getting vibes that tell me you prefer an LMA to a homeowners association? Or are you just saying that flat out?
I think generally, in general, I think that's the way that large-scale projects are going nowadays. It seems to make more sense.
Well, we're not just getting a large-scale project, we're getting a large-scale project in our backyard, so I'm curious how strongly you feel about that.
I think, I honestly believe that, I think the LMA would be the better way to go. It gives, I think, everybody more assurance.
Just to clarify, the comments that were made earlier were that the LMA only comes into effect if the HOA goes inactive, because I don't believe that our Parks Director supports the LMA at this point.
And we're fine with that? We're flexible?
It's a backup plan, not the primary plan.
Okay.
Can I just correct terminology? Hope Sullivan, planning manager, we're talking about HOA, LMA, LMD. Okay. LMA is a landscape maintenance association. It's very similar to the HOA. So the, and actually, you'll notice in the revised conditions of approval, we struck the reference to LMA, or landscape maintenance association, it says HOA or similar entity, because they are similar entities, and we didn't want confusion between a landscape maintenance association and a landscape maintenance district. The Parks and Rec Director and the staff as a whole is 100% recommending that this be, that the maintenance be 100% handled, operation, maintenance by a homeowners association or similar instrument, and a landscape maintenance district is a backup plan should it go inactive, thank you for that wording, or cease to exist. So the LMA is more like an HOA, it's not an LMD. The other thing is, the manager just came over and said, well, how is this all going to work? And it's Supervisor Bagwell's question. And this is what staff's been working on with the phasing plan. There are large infrastructure improvements. It's flood drainage improvements, it's open space improvements, it's parks. There are a lot of pieces here, and the staff is doing a couple things and working with the applicant. One, we're trying to make sure that these improvements are being put in place at the time of impact or prior to impact, so that we don't have, you know, the last guy in stuck doing everything. We want to make sure that we have it fully functional, so if it's only a partial buildout, it doesn't create traffic problems, or the next person can't get their water because the water line wasn't big enough. So we're looking at a comprehensive approach to the development. In terms of who's going to maintain it, we are looking for that homeowners association or similar instrument entity, and there are going to be milestones, which, and I hate that you don't have this, and the phasing plan's not even subject to board review and approval, but we will bring it to you in the form of a development agreement in the interest of transparency and having it recorded. And so what we'll be looking for is certain improvements to be made based on the realization of the impact, and development stops till that's made. It has to be done. And then it has to be maintained by this homeowners association, and those details will be fleshed out with the DA's office and the applicant as part of this development agreement. That's why the stack they gave me is the size of the New York phone book, because of the level of detail we're seeking. So I think your questions are well-placed, and they're helpful, because they're reinforcing that the questioning the staff has had is correct, and it's also helping us recognize things we may overlooked. So I really appreciate it, but I guess I want to just say that if you're getting frustrated that you don't have all the data yet, it's because the specific plan says the phasing plan implementation is with the first construction permit, not the first tentative map. And hopefully that helps. Sorry.
Okay, along those lines, and access to William Street, and negotiations with Gold Dust West, and all of that, where does that enter into this picture, especially if you have subsequent builders or subsequent any of this going on? And thinking in lieu of a school down the road and not impacting Solomon, which is already an impacted road, how is that being dealt with? How's that being handled in this process?
Okay, from the staff perspective, if you look at your late material, 57A and B. 57A was, is couched as level of service, and it may have looked a little Greek to some people. And that's fair, and it was a, it was really good input we got from the supervisors, because they said, look, we're worried. We have a school, we have students, we have school buses, we have residents telling us we have gridlock on Solomon, yet you're putting in all these new units, and what's happening with Gold Dust West? So that's why we included 57B, so that we would be very, like, in plain English, okay, you get 810 units, and then you stop unless you have the connection to William Street, because at that point, you start compromising the functionality of the roadway system. And that just used up my knowledge. So anything past that, we'll have to bring up the traffic experts.
Yeah, I don't think the frustration is misplaced. I appreciate what you had to say, but we're getting a reading from the developers' representatives that as soon as 75% of this project is done, they're going to hand it off to homeowners association. And it's pretty well-known and famous for homeowners associations doing exactly what the board up here has said. So I'm really concerned that the attitude of the developer, and I don't want to ask the representatives, but I'm curious, and you say that an LMA or an LMD is similar, but it's not the same creature exactly.
Well, the district means that we participate at 30% in the common areas to be negotiated. And one of the discussions, and I don't know if we need clarity, and maybe the DA's office can help me a little here, is it the LM-D district in our code at the time that we have to implement this? Not what is there today? Because what concerns me is Supervisor Bonkowski and I have changes to the LMD, so should we put in here that the LMD at the time of implementation? Do we need any clarification?
That would be fine, just as long as everybody knows what all the layers are.
Exactly, because we certainly wouldn't use past regulations, right?
We've had discussions at the board level before that it's at the time of approval, that we have had those issues, and so I just want to put on the record that it'll be the LMD district at the time of implementation of the district. Just putting it on the record.
And if I could make one clarification, it's not the developers' intent to not want to control the homeowners association, it's actually in their interest to control it. So they'll want to keep that control as long as possible until state law requires them to fully turn over, just so they keep that level of quality, and it's a benefit to them.
I should know the answer to this question I was going to ask you. Is Blackstone the master developer for the entire Lampa Ranch?
For the west side of, west of the freeway, yes.
Okay. All right. Go, sorry.
Mike, can you walk us through your conversations with, number one, the school district, and number two, the fire department? Because those are the two areas of major concern with construction in this area.
Sure. We've had, I'll start with the school district, and I don't want to put words in their mouths, so I would welcome them to come up and speak as well. We've had several meetings-
Come up right now, Richard, or whoever you've got with you. Cornet, Mark, or whoever.
We have had several meetings with the school district. Obviously, we're concerned with schools as well. We don't want to build a community that's, that can't be served by schools. The specific plan does reserve a school site. Granted, it comes down to funding is a key issue. We're looking on our end, too, at other projects that have been done, you know, within the region and even around the country of, you know, what creative things can be done to assist the school district. At this point, I think Phase One doesn't necessarily create big issues, but we can see it coming. We know the train is coming down the track, so to speak. So we've been participating in the master plan meetings with the school district. We want to continue to work with them hand in hand, but at this point, I don't think we have a firm conclusion of what will occur, but we're definitely open to creative solutions. As far as the fire goes, as you know, the specific plan- As far as the fire goes, as you know, the specific plan required $1,000 per unit impact fee to address fire concerns. We had a meeting about a month ago, again, with the new fire chief, that wanted to look at potentially, in lieu of that, doing something in order to construct a fire station, but we have not seen any hard numbers on what that would be yet. We are fully intended to pay the impact fee that was agreed to in the specific plan.
Richard, or AJ, you want to talk a little bit? So, I mean, let's hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Supervisors staff. We appreciate this opportunity to be here. And as my colleague here has said, we have met with the folks from Blackstone, they have attended our master planning committee. And of course, as we have listened to the presentation, you know, for many years, we looked over our fence at that Lompah Ranch, and we scratched our heads, and we thought, wow, you know, it could be a long time before this thing starts to develop, or it could be tomorrow, and what are we going to do when that happens? So we've just lived through 10 years of tough economic times for all public agencies, including the schools. We also have a commitment to the community to remove portable buildings from our campuses. During the 70s and 80s, when there was a lot of growth here in town, school does not have the capacity to raise taxes or levy taxes, as it were, without a formal school bond. And so we are required essentially to have that school bonding capacity and ability before we do major capital projects that would be in the amount large enough to build a school or to do major renovations. And so we have recently passed another school bond that was part of a rollover process that was passed in the 2010 general election. And in following through with the promises that we made to the community about how we would use those tax dollars, and that was to build, well, to remove portable buildings that, in my opinion, are a bit of an eyesore, and have, and create other problems for the school district with permanent structures, with brick and mortar structures that put all of our students under one roof. And so we're in that process right now. We're also keeping an eye out for the growth and the development in our region, wondering just how that's going to impact us. And so we have this variety, I guess, of variables that we're trying to factor into a formula to know how we can proceed. And I do want to say thank you to the folks from Blackstone. They have been welcoming, they've invited us, or taken us up on invitation to sit down and talk. Probably of the biggest concern right now, as families move into homes that have been built for this project, is how does that growth impact our buildings and our operations? And in our discussion, we learned, of course, and have learned, that there's a 10-acre parcel of ground there that has been designated for a school. We were also left in that meeting with a commitment from the folks at Blackstone to help us with some of the concerns that we have currently at the high school campus, especially as it applies to some of the runoff water, storm waters that happens when it rains hard here. And they were very helpful in talking about things that they were going to try to do to address some of those issues. But when it came time to talk about the school land, we basically said, we typically don't have a fund where we plan for the purchase of a school property, and that's going to be an issue for us. They told us at the time that 10 acres could be available to the school district at market value. And again, we swallowed hard and thought, I'm not quite sure how we're going to pull that off. But again, they said, we're willing to talk, we're willing to help solve problems. And so that's basically where we are today from a general perspective. I know AJ has got some maybe more specific thoughts, and so with your permission, I'd like to give him the microphone and let him speak. Thank you.
Hello, AJ. Take over, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, supervisors, thank you. Andrew Feeling, AJ Feeling for the record. So it seems every time I've come to the joint meetings, we've talked about this type of issue. So it's kind of my common theme, I guess, with you. So just, I guess, I wanted to bring an update, I guess, regarding what we've discussed previously, regarding kind of concerns with the pace of growth, capacity, and then district funding. So I think it's important that you understand that we're, you know, full disclosure on what we have and what we're doing. So two years ago, I think when we started learning about a lot of the growth happening in the community, we were excited but nervous, and it seems as though this pace is picking up pretty rapidly. And the schools that I believe we're most concerned about would be Fremont Elementary, Sealer Elementary, Empire, Eagle Valley Middle School, and then Carson High, of course. The, what caught me a little off guard was, I know the second phase has been submitted now for this Lompah project. We're, and that's not what we're here to talk about now, but in our understanding, thinking this was going to be a 20-year process, and it just, with seven phases, that's happening pretty quickly. So my level of concern has increased just within the last couple of weeks. There's an apartment complex over by Empire that initially, we believe was three phases, Belalago, which is now apparently all happening at once, which is going to put pressure on them. Of course, Schultz Ranch, Canyon Vista are moving very quickly, putting a lot of pressure on Sealer. So, you know, it's wider than just this Lompah discussion, but the Lompah piece is, of course, the largest. So regarding capacity, I think, you know, you've seen so much in the news about Washoe and what they're going through. And they've raised this sales tax to help fund their construction, to try to avoid double sessions. Apparently, they may still do that, maybe not. But that's obviously not the direction we want to go. We don't want to, two years ago, they added 44 portables, and they're just doing one year. That's a whole school. And that is not the direction that we want to go, we're trying to avoid that. When looking at our actual school, so I tried to get some real numbers for you to feel out and understand, how much room we have. Okay, so Fremont Elementary School, which is the one primarily affected by Lompah, does have one empty classroom. That is the only empty classroom in the entire district at every school, considering every school. There is not one other empty classroom. That's it. So it's fortunate it's right there, considering what we're talking about today. But just to put in perspective, what we're looking at, I mean, legitimately 99-plus percent capacity at our schools right now. So again, going through Empire, Carson Middle, Sealer, Mark Twain, Fritch, Carson High, Eagle Valley, all zero classrooms. Eagle Valley's of particular concern and pertinent to this discussion as well, because although the school already exists, they've been adding students faster than any other building in our district this year. So-
AJ, while you're talking, fill us in on where you are on, or where the school district is on its rollover bonds and what they can use the funds for? Or, you know, what kind of financing tools out there?
Sure. So if I understand your question, that's actually my next point I'm rolling into here. So I was reading your mind when I was getting this together. So I just, just before I get to that, I just wanted to say, so there is, to help districts out, there's something called residential construction tax. That is available to all really rural districts with a population, county population of less than 55,000. Carson City is at 55,192, as estimated. So we just are above the threshold to be able to look at levying that sort of thing. So we don't have any ability to levy any type of impact fees or anything like that to help us with the costs of growth. Clark County has special hotel taxes and other things they can use. Washoe, of course, passed their sales tax, which was a very controversial move on their part. And when it comes down to it for us, it's really bonding, and then we get some money from the government services tax. That's what we have to work with. So in that case, we really almost have less than other districts in the state have to work with. The last rollover bond, which was approved in 2010, just kind of this idea of us trying to be responsible stewards and doing our best to, for ourselves, but also for the taxpayers, we actually, in that process, reduced our debt levy from 47 cents to 43 cents. So that, I just think that's an important point, that, you know, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and still trying to do right by the folks of Carson City. So recently, we went through a bonding process, and we received about $17 million in proceeds from that bond. We recently discussed this at our last facilities master planning meeting. Hope was able to attend. I mean, Mr. Pittinjers here, he was at that meeting. And we talked about that, because we had 16 million really pegged to help increase capacity. Capacity is by far the number one concern, and I think that's understandable. And so we're looking to increase some space at Fremont, but we're moving some special ed programming there, increase space, and get rid of portables at Pioneer High School and Mark Twain, along with some smaller programming changes. But the lion's share of that money is to increase capacity, and at the same time, improve the building quality, I guess, with removing portables. So there was $950,000 that was additional funds that was unexpected. And so you might say, well, that's new money. Well, in our minds, that, the plan is to reduce capacity issues at the schools. That is the number one concern. And so what we floated to the committee was the idea of, at our district office, adding office space. Because what's had to happen at a lot of the schools is they've had to change classrooms, because we've had, with a lot of the grants and things that have come on, we need people to monitor these things and manage these things. We've actually had to add basically office staff. And within the schools, they're pushing, and literally in closets in some cases at this point. So trying to add some office space at the district office to bring people from the schools to the district office, so that we can open up more space there. So, and I don't know if Hope and Patrick, if that sounds about right from our discussions, right? So, so again, that has been the plan. At the beginning of the facility master plan process, the goal was at the end, or in the next bonding cycle, so looking down the road, five years, that we would have about $20 million available that we could bond for in the case of building a new school. That is the cost about a year and a half ago of building a new school. If that were to occur, this bonding would, it would likely be complete in the 2022, 2023, maybe the next school year after that. So this pace of growth now is kind of the concern, because I'm not sure that that is going to be the right timeframe. I mean, it would essentially almost have to happen at that point.
AJ, if I could interrupt you. What interest rate is that based on? If you said that was a year or two ago-
Sure.
On that estimate, you know, interest rates are going up. So how does that impact something that's going to happen four years from now?
The interest rate environment hasn't helped of recent. So in looking at, I'm trying to recall the actual rate we were looking at, but the last time I spoke with Marty Johnson, who's the district bond counselor, I think he works with you guys as well, he was saying the way interest rates are going, I mean, if they would get back to normal levels that we've seen historically, it could reduce that capacity down to like 17, 17 and a half million dollars. So what's been interesting is Washoe now, with that sales tax run that they just did, they've now, they're using as a cost for elementary schools, $23 million. So they have escalated that cost. And that is not including land, that is just purely for the building itself. And then you look at a 2.5% construction cost increase over time. By the time we get to 2022, 2023, we're looking at a $25 million school, $26 million school. So if we would wait until the next bonding cycle, which would be the 2026, 27 timeframe, then the school's about $29 million. And I think at that point, we'd have a new school in the 28, 29 school year, and that's just entirely too late. So the pace of growth appears to be increasing. You know, we don't really have a choice, we have to make this work. So I think for us, having, and as Mr. Stokes mentioned, the conversation with Blackstone was great, and, you know, they're willing to be creative with this. But I think for us knowing, you know, some kind of type of condition of knowing what the price is, it'd be great to have a discount off that price, or, you know, I'll take a donation anytime. But the, I think just having some kind of definitive number to work with, at least from a budgeting perspective, will help immensely. It's, there are so many pieces in the air right now, we're juggling so many things, trying to figure out what the impact of this is all going to be. So that would certainly be something that would be helpful.
Mike, can you walk me through what the thoughts were on the reservation of the 10 acres? So, you know, you have projections in here of a build out of 700 units in four to five years, which is a minimum of 140 units a year. Maybe yes, maybe no. I think if you were building out 140 units a year, you might be bumping up against our growth management ordinance, total number of permits if we have a multifamily project that comes forward the same year. So I have some questions on that. But is this an indefinite reservation on 10 acres in this spa? What was the thinking?
It is an indefinite reservation, because if you look at the spa, it's actually, the land use is designated specifically for a school. So to change that to anything else would take a master plan amendment, is my understanding, to remove that component from the spa. So that's definitely a commitment that's been made. As far as, you know, the pace of growth, I think you had a very good point, the growth management ordinance is going to ultimately limit the pace of growth. Granted, I mean, this is a new project, there's a couple, the first phase, everybody's excited to get going, but the market can only absorb so many units, you know, where things will slow down. We're in a boom, so everybody's anxious to get going. But whether we can sustain that over years and years, that, you know, I don't have a crystal ball to predict if it will be 140 units a year, or if it will be more or less.
My point is that if you have 100 or 150 unit apartment complex that is going to be built, even if you could sell 140 units, you might not be able to get 140 permits.
Right, right. Exactly.
So if it's an indefinite reservation, and what I'm hearing, the indefinite, how about definite, indefinite? So what I'm hearing the school say is that, you know, if they wring every dime out of their bonding capacity, and inflation rates don't go crazy, and the timing works, then they might be able to finance the construction of the school, but then they can't pay for the land. So now we have a site in the spa that's reserved specifically for a school with no way to buy it. So how do we bridge this gap? And has that been part of the conversations that have been ongoing between Blackstone and the school district?
I think that's where we're headed, is what, how can we get creative?
That was an excellent question. Be generous in your answer.
To say that we, that we, what we would discount, that's well above my pay grade. I'm not, that guy back there is going to shoot me through the, in the back if I make any commitments on price. But, you know, I think there are other, we have looked at other school districts and creative ways that have been done, whether it means, you know, a lot of times, and I'm just throwing out ideas, I haven't run this by our client, you know, there's ways to do leaseback agreements on land sometimes that will help soften some of those upfront costs. There's other things as far as the developer doing improvements, like, in other words, building facilities that can sometimes do it at a more efficient cost than public agencies. So there's things that we can look at to see if we can bring those prices down significantly, or maybe avoid some of the upfront costs. But those negotiations still need to occur.
And don't forget to address fire.
Yeah, and actually, that would be, the fire, like you say, we're committed to paying the $1,000 per unit. There was discussion with fire chief that we may be able to build a fire station for much less than what it would cost the city to do it, just based on some of the efficiencies. But we have not seen hard numbers from what their needs are. And I think that's, once again, needs to be an ongoing discussion. At this point, we're committed to that impact fee that's included in the specific plan.
Right, but be aware that the board determined that that impact fee is not specific to fire. So any conversations that you're having in the background, I think the board needs to be kept abreast of that, so that we don't end up with a conflict three months from now on how that money's being spent, or what it's intended for. So just keep that in mind as you go forward. And then if you can also ask or answer my question about the location of the Fifth Street intersection?
Yeah, I will-
I keep looking at this, and I keep saying, this is behind the barrier of the overpass.
Right. I'm going to get Lauren Chilson from Traffic Works to- I'm going to get Lauren Chilson from Traffic Works to address that. He's more familiar with it.
A.J., Richard, thanks. We'll just stay in.
We'll be there.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Good morning. Lauren Chilson, Traffic Works Supervisor upon Kowski, I'd like to answer your question about the Fifth Street connection. I want to make clear that that connection is not in this first tentative map phase. It would be in a future phase, most likely a second or third phase. But to answer your question specifically, we did perform a master buildout traffic study that has influenced and guided the master phasing plan for this project. So, we have looked from the global scale and then also done a Phase 1 traffic study specific to the first tentative map. But in that master traffic study, we identified the need for a right turn lane into that Lompah Ranch Boulevard would be the name. That in itself will require the relocation of that guardrail for 100, 150 feet, most likely to the north side of that ditch, and reconfigure that entire area through there, including providing adequate sightlines, moving that guardrail. That configuration will look entirely different. We fully recognize that that will have to get relocated and addressed. The site, we did perform a sightline analysis. There's actually pretty good sightlines because of the grade coming off of the overpass. You can see down through there, and from the project approach, you can also see up the hill pretty well. So, that will be addressed with the tentative map and improvements in the future phase.
So, you're talking about adding a lane on the north side of the existing roadbed?
Correct. A right turn lane to go into the Lompah Ranch Boulevard. That's part of the, that is outlined in the phasing plan.
And how would that affect the site plan that shows the drainage channel? Doesn't that run directly along the edge of the existing roadbed? So, would that have to be revised at the same time then?
It would have to be aligned as well, adequate to accommodate that right turn lane.
And then, either Mike or Danny, if you can address the channel and all the 90-degree turns that are being added, and how we control potential bank undercutting. To me, that looks like we're building a problem.
Danny Roder, Public Works. Yeah, straight channel's ideal, but there's always challenges and limitations. The, we haven't seen any final channel designs, but I believe we have some conditions of approval. If not, I'll put it on the record now that those turns will require to be armored, so concrete to prevent erosion. And then also, in taking into capacity, the plans for that capacity, there's a coefficient for each of those bins to require that those bins contain the same capacity of the flow. And then also, I'll mention that, I mentioned the same thing at the planning commission. If you kind of look near the bottom of that exhibit, there's a little note there, but it says 17 and a half foot drainage easement. So, that, right now, that channel is sitting in a 17-foot easement, and you can't really tell on there, but the toe of that slope, so the bottom of the channel's 26 feet, and the top of the channel is 62 feet, and the entire easement is 84 feet. So, just to give you an idea, right now, it's probably a 10, 12-foot channel, and it's going to be a 60-foot channel as well. So, if that helps answer your question.
What does that mean?
A lot more water going down that channel. So, what, if you drove by there during the recent floods, that channel was topped out and eroded one of those culverts in front of the ranch house there. That's in a 12-foot channel, so about four to five times bigger of a channel, including appropriate channel linings and erosion control prevention.
Have, this is not going to be the only channel throughout the SPA, is it? I assume there'll be a north-south channel somewhere.
So, the, all of the channels, the regional channels will be required as part of the CLOMAR, which is in, was designated in the SPA, the phasing plan, and some conditions of approval here. So, there's a channel, if you look right there, there's kind of a bold line along Solomon. There's a channel along Solomon that brings flow to the south there. There's the channel along Fifth. There's the channel along Robinson there, you can see with a path next to it. And there's the continuation of the channel on the high school property to, from the end of that over, and there's been some concerns from the school district about, I don't know if it's maybe piping it or correcting some of the issues over there, but that's basically a continuation there. So, those are the, those are regional flood channels, and then there's each phase has its own drainage conditions and low-impact development conditions on top of that.
So, there's a silting issue in this area, so I would assume that your preference would be open channels for maintenance rather than culverting?
That's correct. Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to jump over to another subject now.
Before you go there, Karen, did you want to follow up on anything you said?
Well, this doesn't have to do with the drainage, but I just wanted to know in terms of traffic, at what point does it trigger a light at Robinson and Solomon?
So, the conditions of approval requires to evaluate that with each phase traffic study. We'll be performing a new study with each phase that comes along. It's not warranted in the first phase, as the intersection functions at adequate level service. It would be in a future phase, and we'll determine exactly when that ends with those studies. There is a trigger, however, in the phasing plan that states a maximum number of trips that can be contributed before that would happen, and it says that it shall be installed not later than that point. There's also an equivalent number of units that should be not later than, but it could be as early as meeting the appropriate traffic signal warrants.
So, I'm just going to put this out there, and you may not answer it right now, because I want to make sure everybody else has a chance to ask any questions about fire in school. But the fees that are being negotiated or have been agreed to in the development agreement, which we have not yet seen, are $1,000 per residential unit, $1,000 per multifamily unit, or $1,000 per 1,000 square feet of commercial, which is equivalent to a dollar a foot. I don't understand the methodology. I understand the answer that I've been given on this, which is you take the cost to construct a fire station, and you back it into the total number of units and square footage being built, and you're trying to cover that cost. But it doesn't make any sense to me that a 600-square-foot apartment is paying the same impact fee as a 3,000 or 4,000-square-foot single-family home. I also think that a dollar a foot impact fee on commercial space could cause some problems when you get to construction and trying to lease this space out. So, I just throw that out there so that when these numbers are being talked about, that maybe there's a little more thought put into making them equitable when the development agreement comes back, because frankly, I don't see any sense in these numbers as presented. My opinion, not direction from the board, I'm just telling you where I'm looking at this.
Where are we in the discussion? Do you want more folks? Okay. For planning purposes, folks, Karen, if it's okay with you, we're going to make sure that we, one, Nick and I moved our meetings, but two, going to see if we could recess, and we'll bring up, not now, but see if we can move redevelopment to 2:00, and then see how the nuisance ordinance goes. But I think that's where we are. So, we'll plan on starting at 2:00. If anybody's waiting for redevelopment, that'll happen at 2:00. Okay? All right? All right. Further comments or questions or comments from Blackstone Group or anybody there? All right. It's an interesting discussion. All right. Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in here? Anybody? Speak now. Okay. All right. Are we ready to try a motion?
Sure.
Give it a shot. Supervisor upon Kowski.
I move to approve TSM 17-005, a tentative subdivision map known as Blackstone Ranch Phase 1, consisting of 189 single-family residential lots on property approved for single-family 6,000 zoning located south of East Robinson Street, east of North Solomon Road, and north of East Fifth Street, APN 010-041-70. Based on the ability to make the required findings in the affirmative and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the memorandum dated March 3, 2017, from the Planning Manager to the Board of Supervisors, and Hope, were there any changes that we made today?
Yes.
Yeah, the items contained in the memo.
Correct. And for the benefit of the record, if I can modify that based on input I heard from the board, is on the second page of the late material, Condition 59D, last paragraph, which is new language, third line, the restrictions will provide that should the HOA ever cease to exist or become inactive, an assessment will then be implemented by the city via Landscape Maintenance District per the Carson City Municipal Code at the time of initiation to provide for the maintenance and upkeep of public improvements.
Continuing the motion to include the changes as discussed on the record here today.
Everybody clear on a motion? There's a motion in a second. Everybody clear on a motion? Okay. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Carrie. All right, all of us voted yes, so the record is clear. All right. All right, folks. Keep up the good negotiations with the, you know, what you're hearing from us, and, you know, I think Supervisor upon Kowski and all of us up here know that, you know, there's financial pressures on all sides, but I think that the, you know, and we've got a growth management ordinance in place. But I think that the comment that A.J. made, and you folks know this, you know, the pace of growth is moving, and even though we have a growth management ordinance in place, we need to kind of keep track of where we're going. And I know, you know, I'm not one to put unreasonable demands on developers and things like that, but this is a huge, huge development. So, just keep your pencil out, if you could, for us, folks, and then we'll see where this thing goes, okay? All right. Thanks, Mike. All right. Let's take up, on second reading, this is for Title 8, Bill Number 105. Anybody want to speak on second reading? Any changes, Iris? Anybody raise any questions?
No changes.
Public matter? If anybody from the public want to raise any issues? I don't see any, so motions in order.
I'll make it. I move to adopt Bill Number 105 on second reading. Ordinance Number 2017...
Four.
Four. And ordinance amending Title 8, Public Peace, Safety, and Morals by amending Chapters 8.08 nuisances and 8.09 enforcement provisions for nuisances to better clarify the manner in which nuisances are to be abated and making certain other conforming changes.
There's a motion in a second. Good job on you folks who brought this up, and well done. Okay, on a motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried unanimously. Okay. We're going to be in recess until 2:00, and we'll take up redevelopment at that time. That's item number 24 on the agenda, and then we'll take up the rest of the agenda then. So, we're in recess until 2:00 P.M.